All right, good evening. Welcome to the work session. The first thing on the agenda is our fun part, all the recognitions that you all came for, so we'll get started.
Thank you, Mrs. Morris. I need a little help with turning that on, probably. Oh, am I on? Perfect. I'd like to invite Mr. Sam Ellis to the podium with me. Good evening. I'm very delighted and honored to share with you that Mr. Sam Ellis, health and physical education teacher at Katherine D. Markley Elementary School, has been chosen as P.S. Aford's Pennsylvania State Association Physical Education Recreation and Dance to receive the prestigious Tom Cobb Emerging Leader Award. As many of you know, Sam was hired in the Great Valley School District back in 2012. Since that time, Sam has immersed himself in all things blue and white. He has assisted the Great Valley Boys Basketball Team, he's the head coach of the Great Valley Girls Volleyball Team. In addition, Sam has successfully co-authored a $20,000 grant which provided funds for each elementary school in Great Valley K through 5 to purchase pedometers and heart rate monitors. The pedometers and heart rate monitors are used regularly in physical education and in health. The students are involved in many imaginative partner activities, teachers versus student challenges, as well as individual challenges, all of which are focused on the benefits of keeping fit throughout your life. Sam was also instrumental in the creation of a program at Katie Markley called Rec League Recession. This allows 5th grade students to participate in recreational games during their recess time. He organized and supports our Healthy Habits Program, a before-school program that teaches the boys and girls about healthy habits. Sam also volunteers with our local YMCA to help coach the Stride Program, which is an after-school running program where boys learn the benefits of running, as well as character development. Last but not least, Sam also created an after-school program entitled Kids Can Cook. This is for 4th and 5th graders. This creative idea teaches students how to cook healthy meal items such as homemade pasta, smoothies made from the many items found in the garden behind Katie Markley Elementary School, and my personal favorite, the vegetable egg rolls. As an emerging leader in the field of health and physical education, Sam has kept active and involved in Shape America, local organizations in the Southeastern District Association, as well as P.S. Aford. For the past four years, he has worked on the executive board as the local association liaison. While I never had the pleasure of meeting Dr. Tom Cobb, I do have a colleague who attended Slippery Rock University and worked with Dr. Cobb. When she saw that Sam Ellis received this award, she contacted me to say that while she personally does not know Sam Ellis, she imagined that he must be quite a spectacular individual because Dr. Tom Cobb was loved and admired at Slippery Rock, and anyone who would receive an award in his memory must be quite extraordinary. I couldn't agree more. It gives me great pleasure to introduce P.S. Aford's Tom Cobb Emerging Leader Award to Mr. Sam Ellis.
Thank you. Tonight, I would like to recognize Ella Baldino as one of the 13 winners to be featured in the 2018 PA Attorney General's Annual Drug-Free Calendar Contest. Ella, would you please come up? 5th graders at Katie Markley Elementary School were given the opportunity to participate in the PA Attorney General's Annual Drug-Free Calendar Contest. Students were challenged to create an original piece of artwork demonstrating a drug-free message. The statewide competition included 842 student entries. Ella's drawing was masterfully illustrated and included a message about choosing the right path to success. Ella's slogan was "Life is like a board game, choose the right path." Her artwork will be featured in the Attorney General's Drug-Free Calendar for the month of December. As a winner, the students, their families, and teacher were invited to a luncheon with Attorney General Jeff Shapiro. There, Ella was presented with a special medal of recognition. The students also enjoyed a tour of the Capitol where they met State Representative Dwayne Milne. Ella, as an award, was given $529 to contribute to her PA 529 College Savings Fund. Please join me in congratulating Ella Baldino on this wonderful accomplishment.
Good evening. This evening, we're recognizing the Great Valley Middle School Student Council for their distinguished Keystone Council Award at the 81st Annual Pennsylvania Association of Student Councils meeting in November. There are seven categories that the middle school fulfilled: activities, communication, community outreach, council organization, evaluation, excellence in leadership development, and financial procedures. There are eight middle school officers here this evening representing the entire Great Valley Student Council Organization: Rose Blehen, Kate Bevick, Avery Soers, Ju Got Singh, Megan Ramick, Lauren Frederick, Mia Mozlowsky, and Sophia Geibl.
While you're lining up, I just want to comment. Mr. Whitelock, you know how I feel about this middle school student council. Three really important years in our students' lives, and we seem to be maximizing our talents there. It's really credit to you. Thank you very much for all the hard work, Sean.
In addition, Joe Mooney was one of three Pennsylvania middle-level delegates to receive the Dale Hawley Award, recognizing Joe as the outstanding delegate at the Pennsylvania Association of Student Council's Alvernia Advanced Blue Summer Leadership Camp in July of 2017. Congratulations, Joe.
Hi, my name is Meredith Rieger, and I teach English at the high school. I'm here with Miss Startup, and we're here to talk about the holiday card, the district holiday card. We come every year, and I thought this year I would just say a little bit about how we do the process. A lot of people think that creativity just is like something that descends upon you, like when you're having like nothing else in your mind and like a spark enters, but really, most of the time creativity is the result of a need, and we're being pushed in some way. And so, we really push our kids with this. It's probably the most real-world application in our creative writing class, instead of writing stories or poems. We have a client who expects a product by a certain due date, and we have to create, we have to be inspired to create something by that due date. And that due date is in October, early November. So like if you've ever worked, not the kids, when you work one day in some industry, you're going to have to do things in advance of when they're actually due to your client. And so, in October, we get everything together. And this year, I'm here to tell you about Carolyn and what a wonderful job she did with the poem on the inside. And so, Carolyn, you want to come on up? I think you'll agree, right, that you didn't really feel super inspired in October to write about snow, which may be visiting us later, but she wrote, "The calm and quiet and white tiptoes in late at night, like a parent checking on a child while their evergreen dreams run wild. In creeps the parent with a blanket of snow, soft and quiet in the streetlights glow." And I think she did a great job.
And I would like to say a few words about Sienna Vestry. Do you want to come on up, Sienna? I was outside the hallway before the board meeting. I was a little early, and I was looking at the 25 past holiday cards, and I've been here for every one of them, so it's kind of cool. And I was actually just kind of reflecting as I was looking at them, and I feel like each year they get a little better, and I feel like this is one of the best. Sienna, again, similar to Meredith, it's October, and we're talking about the holiday card, and kids are like, "Why aren't we making a Halloween card?" Nope. So, that's one of the challenges. And the other challenges for my graphic design students is that they can only use two colors, just because it costs a lot more to print a third color, so they get another real-world application there. And it needs to be nonspecific to any religion, because I do believe that a lot of these are sent out to a variety of people. So, it's a challenge, and Sienna's drawing is beautiful, and it's whimsical, and so I'm very proud of her. Congratulations.
Hi, good evening. Sheila, you've made, we're here for all 25, but you were a student for those first five or six. Hi, my name is Don Moravito. I'm the advisor for the Great Valley Mari-United Nations Club. This fall, we had the privilege of participating in the Pennsylvania High School Mari-United Nations Conference in November at Penn State University, and the delegation performed extremely well, earning the honor of the outstanding large delegation out of the 15 delegations that were there. Within that delegation, we had 15 individual awards that would arrange from verbal commendations up to the highest award, which is the best delegate. And if I could, just very quickly to go through the names, the verbal commendations went to Macy Biles, Thomas Cox, Ryan Wirsbinski, Tony Pastiglione, and Sam Scorfone. The honorable mentions went to Grace Overton, Nikhil Gangoli, Hassala Anulu, and Chris Mihon. The outstanding delegate went to Matt Wolf and to Lily Yu. And the best delegate, which is that highest award for each individual committee, went to Brenda Huang, Pat Rogers, Ming Wang, and David Wang. In addition, Brenda also received the highest-scoring individual delegate, which earned a cash scholarship if she would determine to attend Penn State University and join the club of us Nittany Lions. So, we'll wait and see what Brenda decides to do. We have some of our members here. I see Grace and Pat and Ming. If you guys would like to come up, am I missing anybody else? I'm sorry, I was trying to find. I would like to tell a story for Ming. Another student was supposed to attend a conference, and at the last minute had a conflict, so two days before the conference, Ming came in and said, "I'll go." And in a matter of a day and a half, prepared, and ended up winning the award for the best delegate in his delegation, so quite an achievement, Ming.
Good evening. My name is Matt Saracini. I teach band and orchestra at the high school, and I'm here on behalf of the music department to recognize the students who are selected for honors ensembles. The Great Valley High School Music Department is honored to have so many dedicated, passionate, and outstanding musicians who choose to audition for the Pennsylvania Music Educators Honor Ensemble and Festivals. These students spend months developing skills and honing specific techniques in preparation for a competitive audition process against peers from Philadelphia, Delaware, and Chester Counties. This past fall, 40 students auditioned from Great Valley High School. 20 were selected for PMEA district choir, band, and orchestra, including two students who were selected for two ensembles, and one student who was selected for all three ensembles, a very notable achievement. While at these festivals, the students get to work with regionally and nationally renowned conductors and other elite high school musicians culminating in some of the best concerts in our area. The development of this level of musicianship is enhanced as students move through all levels of Great Valley, as music teachers in elementary and middle school provide the foundational understandings and learnings that are necessary to scaffold to a higher level. The high school music faculty would like to acknowledge and thank our colleagues in grades K through 8 who do important work in this regard. We'd also like to thank the building administration, district office administration, and school board for their support through vision, opportunity, resources, and encouragement, which allows for so many musicians to flourish. Thank you also to the parents who encourage, through the initial squeaks and squawks, provide off-hour transportation, and come to support so many concerts. Finally, congratulations to the students on their accomplishments and best wishes on your future musical auditions and endeavors. We appreciate your leadership in our music in the schools and look forward to the awesome concerts. I'm going to read through all the students for the thing, for all of the festivals. Making it to district orchestra this year were Hannah Atlas, Heidi Atlas, Cole Micus, Jovan Lee, Luke Liu, Consuelo Lee, Ruth Vabaly, and Hannah Yun. Selected for district band were Hannah Atlas, Heidi Atlas, David Nemeth, Evan Search, and Cole Micus. And selected for district chorus, Alana Babett, Grace Eshinour, Lauren Ranji, Hannah Atlas, Mason Field, Tyler Dutulio, Nathan Carter, Ronan McDermott, William Spiegel, Sean Gallin, and Daniel Malani.
I should also mention that there's a choir rehearsal and musical auditions tonight, so we have a lot of students who are currently at those events, too.
Hi, my name is Matt Saracini, and I'm the director of the marching band at Great Valley High School. The marching band had a great year in 2017, and there are many, many people and groups who played important parts in allowing that to happen. The marching band would like to thank the football team and cheerleaders for their continued support and camaraderie through our great Friday night team spirit and traditions. Thank you to the principals of Great Valley High School, the district office, and the school board for recognizing the value of having a strong marching band activity for our students. I will talk later about the growth opportunities these students experience throughout the season, but your leadership fosters the type of environment in which these things can happen. Thank you to the faculty of Great Valley High School, who are amazing and encouraging, I'm sorry, are amazingly encouraging, and enthusiastic about their support for the band and the band students. The school has wonderfully talented and committed educators, and to have them support with such fervor is an awesome motivator. Thank you also to the rest of the music faculty, as I mentioned before, that are often the foundation builders for our young musicians. I want to thank the marching band staff, a group of professionals who cares solely about seeing the students grow and develop, not only as musicians, performers, and artists, but also as good citizens. Thank you to the parents and GVMPA, who without the season would not have been possible. GVMPA members donated over 1,000 hours of time and did many, many things to make the logistics work smoothly. The 2017 season was one of great performances and accomplishments for the band. The season began on May 20th at our first meeting. Throughout the summer and fall, 65 students in the band were involved in more than 225 hours of practice, over 100 hours of football games, parades, cavalcade band competitions, and other events. The band's field show this year was called "In the Air" and explored themes and motifs about subjects and things in the air, from birds to kites to balloons to planes. The students worked extremely hard, dedicating themselves to constant physical and mental development while refining every last detail of their performance. The marching band's goal is to try to improve every week and give the best possible show. The band attended five cavalcades throughout the season to be evaluated and judged in competition. On Sunday, November 12th, the band competed at Hershey Park Stadium in the 2017 Cavalcade of Bands Championship. 12 bands competed in the Liberty A classification. The GBHS marching band gave their best performance of the season, and the students were very happy with their final performance. At the first competition of this season, the band scored a 77.1, and their hard work and commitment to excellence paid off during the year, as the band received a championship score of 93.0, finishing in first place and winning special awards for high music and high color guard. This is the second cavalcade championship for the band and for this group of seniors. However, even when considering all of the numerous accolades and numbers involved, the most important and special part of the season to me was seeing how the students grew as people, to see them become more confident performers, thoughtful leaders, and encouraging teammates, to see them persevere through struggles and find the way to push to loftier heights. They were a great group of students to work with and deserve all of the recognition they have received. Congratulations to the students on their wonderful fall season. And we have our drum major and field commander, Cassie Graff, and Evan Aho here as representatives of the band. You guys can come on.
Hi, I'm Matt Saracini. Hi, I'm Jerry McGrath. I'm the coach of the girls tennis team here at the high school, and I'd like to congratulate all of the award recipients tonight. Tonight, it's my pleasure to talk about two excellent young ladies, Adira Nair, who is with us here in the audience, and Sadie Bozan, who is playing in a basketball game right now. So, real quick about Adira, she won the Chessmont Singles Championship for the second year in a row, and we're pretty sure that we haven't had a girls' player that has done that in the history of the school. This year, she did so without losing a set, so it was pretty fun to watch. And then, when she and Sadie teamed up to play doubles together, they won the league with barely losing a game, and a lot of the credit goes to Coach Beebe, who is here in the back, who talked to them about strategy kind of throughout the year and certainly during the tournament, and kept them loose. They had a secret fist bump break before they went out, and that was the key. All right. And then, after that, they went on to district play, and you know, for the district, you're talking about the best players in southeastern Pennsylvania, and you can imagine that there are an awful lot of excellent players in southeastern PA. And they played their way into the semifinals, another first for the school for girls tennis here. And at that point, there wasn't anybody in the building other than the players, their parents, and Mr. and Mrs. Nair here tonight, like they were for just about every match for the last four years. But anyway, other than the players, the parents, and their coaches, there wasn't anybody who thought that they could win that semifinal match, or the final match for that matter. And in each case, they overcame a deficit. In the semifinal match, they were down 2-5 in that third set, and it would have been easy to say, "Well, you know what? We put up a great fight against the number-one seed in the district, but we just didn't get it done." But that's not who they are, and they were, they won in three sets in both of those matches for three reasons. One, they're both very good players and they work hard. And two, these Great Valley girls had grit. They weren't going to go away. They weren't going to give away any point. And the third reason was, they just never lost faith in their ability to get it done. And that's important for so much more than just a tennis match. I mean, that transcends sports. And if anybody ever asks why we do extracurricular activities, it's for opportunities like everybody had here tonight, to find challenges and to accept those challenges and to overcome them and to see how great they can be. I think I speak for Coach Beebe when I say it was the best experience as a coach that we had. We've been doing this for 10 years together, and to watch them go on that magical run into the state tournament is something we'll never forget, so thank you. And to watch them go on that magical run into the state tournament is something we'll never forget, so, thank you.
Good evening, my name's Owen Brown. I'm the golf coach for Great Valley High School. Congratulations to so many of the people here who have won awards and everything. It was interesting hearing Jerry speak about the training. And I had a chance to have Adira as a student in middle school in math class. And, you know, her connection is, I remember her getting up in the morning and traveling to New Jersey and going there on weekends to train in tennis. And she told me about that when she was in middle school. And I'm here to introduce Liv Juliana, and she's our golf champion. She never knew what golf was in middle school. Her parents never would have expected her senior year to be in front of all of us talking about golf. This is a girl who grew up playing soccer. This is a girl who grew up playing basketball. She wasn't playing field hockey swinging a club. She wasn't playing softball with the eye-hand coordination. That wasn't even in her realm. So for her to achieve what she has achieved in the short timeframe that she's had playing golf is just unbelievable. The sky's the limit. She has achieved everything she's done in golf so far, and she's earned a scholarship to college for her golf, which is outstanding. She will be attending Saint Francis University on a golf scholarship. And she's going to study occupational therapy. A lot of medical stuff. She has overcome tremendous challenges. And her accomplishments in golf and her accomplishments in school are just outstanding. I'm very proud and privileged to get to know her. I know her parents are very proud of her. In the four years of her high school golf career, she has been a league qualifier all four years. She's been the number-one player on the Great Valley Girls Golf Team all four years. She has, similar to what Mr. McGrath talked about with the girls playing tennis, she's accomplished everything in girls' golf, high school-wise, that nobody here at Great Valley has had before. She won the Pac-10 Championship. And those of you who are golfers, she shot a final round of seventy even par to win. She's qualified for districts two years in a row. She's our first girl to qualify for the regional golf tournament. That's the focus we've had a girl go in high school golf. Liv has played in tournaments all throughout the summer. I've had the privilege of being at those tournaments with her and things like that. So it's just been a real joy and a real bride for us. And she's been the captain of the team. The team has qualified for the districts the last two years under her leadership and her guidance. So it's with great pleasure and great honor, I introduce Liv Juliana.
We have one more recognition to give. My name is Jessica Shock. I teach fifth grade at Charlestown. And we have a lot of artistic abilities in Great Valley because we actually have two students that qualified to get awards for the top thirteen for our drug-free calendar contest that Mr. Ellis talked about at the beginning of the ceremony. So my student Hannah Deriband is one of the students that also qualified, so we're going to recognize her as well tonight. So Hannah, come on up.
Next up on the agenda is the Great Valley Middle School Student Council, if you'd like to come up to the podium.
Good evening to the board, Dr. Speaker Paul Vinsky, parents, teachers, and GVM community members. I'm Rose Bahim, the student council eighth-grade president.
Hi, I'm Kate Bevick, the eighth-grade vice president.
Hi, I'm Avery Source, I'm the eighth-grade treasurer.
I'm Lauren Frederick, I'm the seventh-grade secretary.
I'm Julia Singh, the eighth-grade secretary.
I'm Sophia Geibl, the seventh-grade vice president.
I'm Emma Slavsky, the seventh-grade treasurer.
I'm Megan Raymond, the seventh-grade president.
So our October sock drive was a huge success. We collected over six hundred new socks, which is more than we collected last year, so that's good. The socks were donated to the retired and senior volunteer program, and they'll help the disadvantaged and homeless living in Chester County this winter.
We attended the eighty-first Annual Pennsylvania Association of Student Council State Conference from November 2nd to November 4th at Red Lion High School. We participated in leadership seminars and listened to keynote speakers. We also had the opportunity to interact with over a thousand middle and high school students, student council members from across Pennsylvania. We were awarded as a Keystone Council Award, and Joseph Minnie won the Dale Holly Award for his contributions at a summer leadership camp.
In December, we had the Winter Dance for seventh and eighth graders. We had a great turnout of two hundred and seventy-five students, and we collected fifty canned food items for the local food bank. Everybody had a great time at the Winter Wonderland themed dance. We would like to thank the PTO for providing the tasty treats for the dance.
We conducted a personal care items drive for active military members stationed overseas during the month of December. We collected seventy-five pounds of soap, Gatorade packets, shampoo, gum, shaving razors, energy bars, et cetera.
On December twenty-third, we had our Fourth Annual Ugly Sputter Spirit Day. We had a great turnout this year, and we are all excited for next year as well. On Friday, January nineteenth, from six-thirty to eight-thirty, we will be having our annual Mother-Son Bingo. The Mother-Son Bingo is an activity for our GVMS male students and their moms. Prizes will be given out to the winners for various bingo competitions. Also, pizza and refreshments will be provided. Female reps will be working this activity to ensure it runs efficiently and properly. Tickets are on sale now. They cost eight dollars fifty cents for each individual participant. This activity has always had a huge turnout, and we hope it's great again this year.
Student Council is also hosting our third Chili Cook-Off at GVMS on February 2nd from six o'clock to eight o'clock PM. The event is a Super Bowl theme, and there will be chili, raffles, prizes, and trivia. Tickets will be on sale soon and will cost five dollars for GVMS students and ten dollars for adults. Please visit the GVMS website for more information.
This year, we are continuing the tradition started two years ago in National Engineers Week. We are holding a paper airplane contest for one dollar, you have three throws. In the morning, we will have a competition between ticket holders to see who engineered the best paper airplane. The winner from each grade will receive a prize and all the proceeds will go to local charities.
We are planning on having the Father-Daughter Dance in the spring. The Father-Daughter Dance is always a good event, and both daughters and fathers have a good time on the dance floor. Male representatives of our student council will be working this activity to ensure everyone has a great time. We are expecting another big turnout this year.
We have continued to hold monthly general council meetings. Our representatives can bring their ideas among with the ideas of our student body to help improve our council. The meetings are held on the third Thursday of every month and are always a great bonding time for our council.
The Ski and Snowboard Club has begun their seasons. They will start their season with the trip to Montage on January twentieth, which is a Saturday, and Elk on the following weekend, and many more trips that continue until March. I've done the Ski and Snowboard Club through middle school, and it's always been like a great experience.
The sports teams at the middle school have been very exciting so far with the girls' basketball team that has just finished up their fantastic season. Seventh grade went undefeated, and eighth grade went nine and one. The boys' basketball season is just beginning, and the wrestling team is having a great season so far.
As you know, January is school board recognition month, so we'd like to thank you all for your opportunities you provide us as the students of GVMS. We value all the work you do for the Great Valley community. Thank you for your time. Have a great night.
Thank you very much. It's always great to hear what's going on in a middle school. And I agree with you, the ski club's a lot of fun. I'm going Saturday, too. Well, I'll let him go. Mr. Beauclair would give us a quick update of what's going on in the high school, and then you guys can grab your parents and go home and do homework, or stay and listen to Mr. Linderman's budget.
It snowed. So I'm sure high schoolers, middle schoolers, and elementary schoolers combined did enjoy their snow day a couple weeks ago. But unfortunately, because of the weather, we haven't been able to have a student council meeting as a whole in the past two months. But I'll just recap what's been happening over the course of the school year so far. So last month, we had our Holiday Door Decorating Contest, where we had four winners in each wing. And Mr. Jay ended up winning with his fantastic arrangement relating to Epcot and the holidays. Also, just this past Thursday, on the eleventh, we had the annual blood drive with the Red Cross. We had a really successful time. We were three shy of our goal of a hundred pints of blood, so we're going to shoot for that next year. Also, upcoming, February tenth, Great Valley High School is holding a TEDx event, where we have students, teachers, and distinguished authors speaking at this event. We are able to hold a hundred people, so a lot of the tickets are open for the students for fifteen dollars apiece, and we're all really excited about it. Besides that, I'll keep you guys updated when we have our next student council meeting.
Thank you. If you guys all want to leave, you can leave.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next thing up on the agenda is program. I will turn it over to you.
The first item under program is the Project Achieve grant, and this grant was applied for by our Special Education Department. This is a grant that has now transitioned from the Pennsylvania Department of Education to the patent, the Pennsylvania Training and Technical Network. And it is to provide support to our students with disabilities, most notably those students that have been diagnosed with autism or an autism spectrum disorder, to provide a partnership, and we partner with West Chester University. And a special thank you to Dr. Wexler and Andrea Dinsmore, who have really taken the lead on that grant. So it's a $10,000 grant to offset the costs of the partnership with West Chester, so, big thank you. Next under program is the proposed school calendar for 2018-2019. The process that was used, the calendar was presented. There was some discussion, and then the calendar was shared with our parent key communicators to receive additional feedback. Samantha Yuan is the representative on PKC, the board representative, so she helped facilitate a conversation to gain more insight. And the calendar is there to be voted on next week at the board's pleasure.
Can we just briefly talk about some of the highlights, because there's a lot of big changes in this.
Yeah, so maybe you could just go over what's going to be different next year versus this year.
Absolutely. Probably the largest difference, there are two highlighted differences. One is Labor Day falls on September third, and the proposal is to start school September fourth. So the day after Labor Day, in lieu of before Labor Day. There are also local holidays noted on spring break. Those local holidays would mean that the makeup days would not use those days over spring break. So in years past, snow makeup days may have utilized the week of spring break, which in 2019 would be April fifteenth to the nineteenth. The other major difference and a discussion that ensued with the parent key communicators. In the past, conferences were held the Monday and Tuesday of Thanksgiving. The proposal is to hold conferences November sixth and seventh and have school the Monday and Tuesday. It would allow the conferences to be held sooner in the marking period, more aligned to report cards. The, another change is a half-day prior to Christmas break. So the Friday before the winter holiday or the winter break would be a half-day. This year, it was a full day, and in years past.
And just for clarity, every time on there that it says early dismissal, that means half-day?
Yes, early dismissal is a half-day, yes.
And then how about graduation?
Pardon me?
How about graduation?
Graduation and the last day of school is scheduled for the same day, which is Friday, June fourteenth. If days would be added to the end of the school year for snow makeup, that would not impact the date of graduation. So graduation will remain the same, even if everyone in grades eleven, or kindergarten through grade eleven, will make up days, the seniors will not. They will graduate on June fourteenth, 2019, yes.
I'd just like to add, so I was there to facilitate the discussion. All of these changes were discussed with the parent key communicators. Additionally, there is no school on Election Day, November, and the primary day, and that also was, feedback was discussed with that as well.
And could you just summarize who and what the parent key communicators?
Yeah, so the parent key communicators are parents that are selected from each school. They come to a meeting with the superintendent and a board representative once every six weeks, I believe that is. So there was a ten or a dozen parents there representing each of the schools, and all of these changes were discussed with them. And they're representing the other parents and families of their schools. So we talked about the election days, we talked about the extra, the changes to Thanksgiving, the day after Easter. So all of these things were discussed with them, and there was a lot of back-and-forth discussion, and some changes were made as a result of their feedback. And my understanding in the past was that we have done a survey, asking parents in the community about their opinions on things like whether or not to have off the Monday and the Tuesday. And my understanding in that situation, it was split about fifty-fifty. So we've done it one way a few years, we're trying a different way, but things do change.
Absolutely, and with the survey, some of the feedback was to not have our breaks align as closely to holidays. For families that travel, it tends to be more expensive to travel on holidays. That was some of the feedback that was shared at parent key communicators. That was some of the feedback that was shared at parent key communicators. Another change that was made based upon the feedback that was not added in the proposed, that was not included in the proposed calendar but was then added, was to include an in-service on the Monday following the spring break. And that was for those that were in attendance, they had expressed the challenge. Sometimes if you are celebrating at the end of spring break to travel, and you're traveling, that that Monday is oftentimes held. So that on the calendar is a teacher in service. You'll also notice that the snow makeup days, in calendars past, there were 10 makeup days included, and those days were listed. We have three makeup days. The Friday, January 18th would be a snow makeup day for the first. The second snow makeup day would be February 15th. The third would be the Monday following spring break, and then all other days would be added to the end of the school year. And that's all included in the calendar.
So Regina, graduation is June the 14th?
Yes.
So last year, I think it was June the 6th.
We started earlier.
So we started a week?
We started the week before, Labor Day was here.
Prior, okay. Okay, thank you.
So just to make sure we're all clear, next week, we have to approve a calendar. So, yes, hope everybody think about this one and decide if it meets our needs or not, and next week, we'll be voting on it.
I just want to say a large thank you to the board members who provided the feedback, as well as the parent key communicators, the administration and staff, who have also provided the historical perspective as well as insights and suggestions. So, thank you.
Will we be looking at, not for this calendar, but for years forward? Because I know there's been a lot of different discussion, like with the key communicators and all about election days and not election days, and Thanksgiving and not Thanksgiving, that we get a little bit broader perspective on it to resurvey kind of parents and see like kind of what is important to parents now, or set up committees, or whatever we want to do so that we get that feedback back from the larger group.
Yes, and when that suggestion was made, I think that's a great one, and I think to organize that feedback in the spring of this year and have it in an ongoing way so it's not an under-the-gun type of decision that we have an opportunity to really gain some feedback when it's not so time-sensitive.
That's what I was thinking, that we're not necessarily for this calendar, but that we're looking at that for years, for the future, so that we're not kind of taking our first look at it in December, January, and then saying, what do we want to do? So.
So would you be able to do a survey sometime this spring to get feedback?
Yes, we were talking about a survey as well as possibly looking at pulling together a committee of interested folks that would. So part of the survey would include, would you be interested in coming together to have a discussion? Because I think in the survey, what we found when the survey was done, and I have to thank Jen Blake for really orchestrating a lot of that discussion, we got a lot of information from the survey that absolutely told us that it is truly 50/50. It was, people felt strongly about starting before Labor Day, and just as many people felt strongly as starting after Labor Day. So it was, I think, a conversation following that survey would be time well spent with a group of folks.
We haven't surveyed that in a while, have we?
Two years ago.
Two years ago, so I mean, I just think that it's good to keep the pulse on that one, especially because calendar is the thing, one of the few things that affects everybody in the district. So if we can kind of do that on some ongoing basis, I think that's helpful.
Thank you.
And we still have the mechanism for educational field trips. So if it is educational, someone might be able to miss, for example, the two days before Thanksgiving if they're planning on that.
Yes. And I believe that was what was shared with the parent key, at the parent key communicators by the group.
All right. The monthly enrollment report is there, if anybody's curious. And then next up is policies, and I will turn this over to Policy Committee Chair.
Thank you very much. I'd like to recap a meeting that we had on January 3rd, and I'm going to go into a little more detail than I usually do, in part because we have new board members and just make sure we're on the same page. I'd like to invite any members to jump in whenever they want, as well as Dr. Gafredo and our superintendent. I'm going to go through one by one and try to contain the conversation to each policy and then move to the next one, so. Okay, policy 3171, 4171, 5171, educator misconduct and administrative guidelines for administrative, professional, and classified staff. And just for the records, the policies come in three different tiers, depending on if they're administrative, professional, or classified. So that's why there's often three policies dealing with one kind of general subject. It was recommended by the attorney to add administrative guidelines. The policy covers in-room classroom behavior. Language was standardized to align with the law and the school code. This policy deals mostly with sexual offenses. It doesn't cover things like a staff person getting a DUI, that's covered elsewhere. So just be perfectly clear what this policy is about. Questions about this one? Okay, moving on to policy 418, 518, penalties for tardiness and attendance for professional and classified staff. Let's see. So just for the record, we don't have an official sign-in for teachers, but they do swipe badges, so time can be tracked that way. There's also cameras if ever needed, operating at doors. The official hours for elementary staff is 8 to 3:45. For secondary staff, the hours are 7:30 to 7:15. These times do allow for staff meetings as needed. For example, before school for elementary staff or after school for secondary staff. The attendance requires of teachers are laid out in the contract, but we just put a, you know, put a policy together just to have that for our sake. Questions on this one? Okay. Policy 319, 419, 519. And I'm also going to combine a conversation about policy 453, which is a new policy. But we'll start with these, the 19s. Outdoor, sorry, outside activities and administrative guideline for administrative, professional, and classified staff. Current policy 319 addresses tutoring for a fee. The committee conducted a lengthy discussion, and a proposal was made to have a separate policy relating to tutoring. Any references from tutoring are going to be removed from this outside activities policy. Tutoring for a fee will then become policy 453, 553, and it's created as a separate policy. The policy on tutoring should cross-reference policies related to policy 919, campaigning another political activity on district property, and policy 320, freedom of outside speech, sorry, speech outside of the school setting. In the administrative guidelines, we took information on tutoring out of there because it's covered by a different policy. So that's 319, which I think will be less conversation-provoking than talking about policy 453. I would love to invite Dr. Gafredo to speak, and the superintendent, please, to speak a little bit about either or both of these policies, just so we can all be on the same page about these.
Before you get to tutoring, did you want to cover the 19s, which are on campaigning? Or is that what you were, do you want to comment on that, or do you want to wait and do the comments together?
Well, campaigning is going to be, I think that's 919.
Okay, so it's a different?
Yeah, that's the one at the end.
Thank you.
There we go. Regarding 453, which is a new policy, it really, as Ms. Gunderson explained, the tutoring for a fee, when many times we do have staff members and employees who can tutor students outside of school or have other endeavors. And so, as many districts have, they will have a separate tutoring for a fee policy to really help avoid any sort of conflict of interest or reasonably control any perceived misconceptions regarding conflicts of interest. So one of the things that we had done in collaboration with our attorneys is done a thorough investigation of surrounding districts and the policies that they've had. With that, we were able to construct the policy before you now, and it really addresses, it defines what tutoring is and what it is not. It goes much further than what we had previously as far as addressing even the spouses of employees, if they were to tutor, what those services may be. We are looking to come up with some reasonable guidelines to put in place to really make sure that we are limiting conflict of interest. And primarily, what you'll see within the policy, the spirit of 453 really deals with, if for a teacher, if a child is on his or her caseload and that teacher is assigning the child a grade, they should not be tutoring that student outside of school in that very same content area. The policy, you'll see within the phrase, it does talk that our parents and students are entitled to certain support. If they're struggling, they should not have to pay for that support. And so I think the policy also reinforces that measure as well. So the question before us is really, what do we want to establish as a district as far as reasonable guidelines? And I think there are several examples built into the policy of at least two specific examples towards the back of what would be allowable tutoring under the specific district policy.
If I remember some of our discussions correctly, we had said that even if a teacher is tutoring, if a student is in their caseload, depending on what, that we really didn't want them tutoring that student necessarily within the district. Because I remember we had a lot of discussion about this, that if you're tutoring, because we didn't want anything to come back across with any kind of quid pro quos or anything. Because when you just said not in their content area, I believe it's a little broader than just their subject.
It's in any content area, correct. And the policy before you does reflect that, so I appreciate the correction. Thank you.
And one change that I think is worth highlighting is that we're proposing in the administrative guidelines a form that would need to be filled out and returned to the building principal. Do you want to talk about this a little bit? Thanks.
Yes, just one of the issues that we want to make sure that we're not missing, a student who may need additional support, we're obligated by child find, it is called. So if a child's having problems, we need to make sure that we are aware of that, addressing it. So one of the stopgaps, and I thank the policy committee for bringing this up, is to actually have a form that if a teacher is providing tutoring services, that they would submit that to the building principal, and then that would be held in the personnel. So we are aware of the tutoring services that are provided, especially by district staff.
But we're not asking for identification of the student being tutored?
No, no.
Okay, so just to be perfectly clear, on this form, you have the name of the teacher, instructional staff, or near relative. You have the number of students tutored and grade levels of students, and brief description of tutoring activities. So students by name are not identified.
And this was a recommendation by the solicitor, by our solicitor as well, that we're just aware, if we have an extensive amount of tutoring happening in especially a certain subject area, that we make sure we're taking the steps to find out if that tutoring goes above and beyond what the expectation is for our offerings of curricular support.
I had a couple of comments. I think it's an important policy, and I'm glad we're putting it in place, and it has detailed examples and all. There's two things that I thought of which concerned me that I think would not be allowed in the policy. So it says that the student can't be on the teacher caseload that year. In the high school, many students take semester-long classes, and I felt that that was potentially unfair, because if the semester's passed, why couldn't that teacher, you know, they might be teaching something else the second semester that's not related to that child, and that child could benefit from their help. So I felt that was potentially an omission. I mean, it could go through the exception policy, but I thought maybe it was a little too restrictive. And the other one was also, what if, how do you treat a homeroom teacher? Again, in the high school situation, so you have someone for homeroom who maybe happens to be a math teacher, but not your math teacher, would you be allowed to use that teacher for a tutor? So those, or would that teacher be allowed to tutor? So I thought those two were maybe the kind of special cases of the high school that we should consider.
So I'm a little confused.
With her comments or before?
Yes, yes, as they relate to, do we, do we have a recommendation from the committee on this policy? Or are there going to be potential changes made? Or are we doing discussion now to see whether or not that policy will change?
I think that this policy would benefit from any input. If there are changes, let's talk about them. Nothing that the committee does is ever set in stone without coming back to the board and saying, hey, what do you guys think? Because we're in that room, but we don't have the benefit of hearing other opinions. And for example, I didn't think about that. So now is the time to talk about it, work through it, figure out what we want to do.
In keeping with that, Dan, if I may, knowing that I don't sit on this committee and you all do. So I'm asking you, as far as, if you could address Samantha's comments as to what you're feeling as to making changes to this policy to reflect her comments.
I think Samantha raised two very good points. I think regarding semester courses, you know, there's really no, the spirit of the policy is to help us avoid any conflict of interest. So if a child is a teacher for first semester, that course is complete, the grade has been given, and that teacher doesn't have the child in the second semester, I'm not quite sure where the conflict of interest would lie. So I do think that's something that we have to discuss. It's a very good point. It was not something that came up in policy, so I'm very happy that you shared that here this evening. Regarding your second example, I believe under the policy with a homeroom teacher, there's no grade really assigned. Again, not necessarily any sort of conflict of interest or leverage at stake. My belief, and again, it would be a board policy, I would certainly support that as a former high school principal, and in my role now, I would not see a conflict of interest with a homeroom teacher. I think it gets blurred when you start assigning grades and people are paying for other services and tutoring outside. I think that's where there can be some misconceptions. But regarding the homeroom teacher, I'm not sure how the board feels. I'm just responding to Ellen's comment.
But a homeroom teacher would be no different than a, than a second math teacher tutoring somebody in math, right? I mean, homeroom teachers just happen to be teachers in many different subject areas that could assign a homeroom, right? So it would be no different than if you had, I can't remember the math teachers anymore. But if Mr. Phillips wasn't your teacher and you hired him to tutor you, that would be okay in math, for instance.
Correct, yes.
That's just not how I read it, so I just thought maybe it should be clarified in the review.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure.
My only question with the semester teachers would be, and the only reason why I don't know if you would want to leave it as an exception, is if you are going to have a teacher in the spring, and they are tutoring you in that content area in the semester immediately before, in the same school year, is that something that would be, something you would feel comfortable with? That it would be all right, that you're tutoring, that they would be tutoring in that content area leading up into the class where that they would then be giving a grade immediately in that same, it's not like the summer where you have some kind of extended break in between. The kids know who their second semester teachers are in the first semester. It's not like in ninth grade, you don't know who your 10th grade math teacher is, so that one's a little bit different. But in the beginning of ninth grade, you know who your second semester, or in, you know, 12th grade English where that's split up into two separate, you already know who that second English teacher is.
Are there any kids with enough time that they would even be able to do that? Because from all these activities that I heard, I'm realistically not sure how much of an issue that is.
I don't know, that's why, but that's why I'm bringing it up. Like, would you feel comfortable with a student who knew that that was going to be their teacher, hiring that teacher to tutor them in the semester immediately preceding?
I think it goes back to, as Dr. Gafredo said, the immediate conflict of interest is, if I'm tutoring you and my responsibility is to teach you during the school day, and then I'm being compensated to teach you after the school day at that same period of time, that's really the conflict of interest. I think one of the dangers that we have to be aware of is, with schedule changes, you never know if that is going to happen. So you may think you're going to have a teacher, and then your schedule changes, and you end up having the teacher who then tutored you. I don't know that we can preempt that, nor would that really present a conflict of interest. So I think it's the current, at the snapshot in time, not somebody who would be tutoring a student and also giving that student a grade at the same time. That's the danger.
I just want to make sure that you guys are totally comfortable with that.
Thank you.
So then it seems to me that the policy as it stands actually is okay with taking Samantha and Jen's comments, so we're good with this. Thank you.
I'm sorry, the way I read the policy, those things I asked for weren't in there, so I was requesting that they be clarified in there. So it's not as it stands, it would need, okay, all right, great, thank you.
Do we have a sense for whether or not a change to this policy would impact a lot of students currently that might be depending on certain teachers for certain levels of support? And if so, do we have a plan for how to make sure they get what they need?
It could be an issue where you have certain departments. Mr. Barrett mentioned math. Well, the high school may have 14 or 15 math teachers. So I may have a certain teacher, I know I can't get tutoring from that particular, but I have 12 or 13 others. It starts to become an issue when you get into very small departments. If you have a department of one, two, or three, the options become limited if you want to secure a tutor within Great Valley or someone that's an employee here. Certainly, there's other options, there's neighboring districts, that is not uncommon. But that, Amy, to address your question, if you're dealing with a smaller department and there's only one or two teachers, and there's only one or two teachers that provide that, parents would then be forced to look outside at non-Great Valley staff.
We do have an exception policy in here. So I'm just going to read this, so policy exceptions. Subject to the requirements of law and any applicable professional code of conduct, the superintendent or designee is authorized to make exceptions to this policy upon good cause shown. We're doing so as consistent with the educational mission of the district and in the student's best interests. Such exceptions are meant to be rare and infrequent in nature, and should not be granted absent the presence of a unique and uncommon circumstances. Any exceptions to this policy should be documented in writing prior to the commencement of any tutoring taking place. So that, to me, might be rare enough that if you're studying something, but I would love your opinion to...
Well, my only fear, too, to piggyback on that, if you can answer them both at the same time, if, once we vote on this, it will become policy immediately, so there could be students who have already engaged in tutoring for this school year that might be caught unawares. So they couldn't possibly have requested ahead of time because they're already in doing it. So if you can just kind of talk about that.
And this is in the current, currently, teachers are told not, that they are not to tutor students who they are current, who they're teaching. So this is not different than what is currently in place. The biggest difference primarily is that outside activities and tutoring were put together. Tutoring was considered an outside activity. So as the committee went through this, it was to pull that out and isolate those things that truly are aligned to specific tutoring versus outside activities, such as sports camps and things like that. So that was the conversation. But the directive has been that teachers do not tutor for a fee those students whom they are assigning a grade. So that is something, and Dr. Guafredo has worked with some staff members who were not aware of that stipulation.
Thank you. Are we comfortable as it stands right now with those additions? Okay.
One quick question. I presume you also use these forms to kind of do a check to ensure that you don't have bad teachers teaching at a subpar level to kind of churn the tutoring aspect of it, to extract money from students? Is that kind of, do you kind of use that as well, just to make sure that, you know, from this reporting function you have on this form here, that, again, you have people kind of taking advantage of the system?
It could certainly provide that stopgap. At this point, it's to make sure that our programs are meeting the needs of students while they're in classes. And quite honestly, a lot of students will choose to get tutored to go over and above the expectations of the class. So I don't see that happening, but that would definitely provide us with some documentation that we would follow up on if, in fact, that was at all an issue.
Absolutely, and I think Phil, the form is new. We have not had a form previously. So this will really, for the first time, enable us to at least track who is tutoring in the district, to monitor closely, as Dr. Speaker Balavinsky said, and then see if we need to intervene, revise the policy, revise guidelines. So it's new, we're not quite sure what it will yield, but we think it's a good positive first step to get us more in the know about what's going on with tutoring for a fee.
But you can also use that to look at, you know, particular subject matter areas. So if you have, you know, certain subjects that are being taught, and they are chronically requiring students to go out and engage teachers, that should give you some feedback to suggest to you that the curriculum's not right, the teacher's not doing a good job, or a combination of both. So I'm just, I'm kind of, I know we're talking around the issue of, you know, we don't want teachers extracting money from students that they're teaching and grading, but I think there's other value that you can take from that as well, as a separate data point, but...
So Dan, just one last time. So you're recommending that we accept the policy as it's written now?
Well, I think Samantha, if we include that, I can certainly work to draft that, and we could bring the policy back with the revised language for your next meeting.
Yeah, the protocol is, it would go back to the committee to revise and come forward with recommendation of input, right?
I was going to say, if the only recommendation, it sounds like the only recommendation there was to change it from year to academic period. I'm not sure that that needs to go all the way back to committee.
Right.
And we can bring it back for first reading at your next meeting.
I just had one question. You mentioned these forms, and students' names weren't on them. And I get where you could identify program needs, but what if you had an individual student who really needed help, that wasn't getting it because they were going outside where we should be providing that service? Is that, how would you identify somebody like that?
I believe that's independent of tutoring, and that's our responsibility, and there are a lot of situations in place. Dr. Wexler is working with Mrs. Beck and the high school administration primarily, as well as the middle school administration, and all of the elementary schools for a child study team. So that would be independent of tutoring. And we have a responsibility to make sure if students are seemingly in need of additional interventions, that we identify what those are.
Okay.
So there are other stopgaps in place that are independent of tutoring.
Because these forms really only apply to our employees. Because, so we could have a student who's in massive need, who's going to somewhere else that has nothing to do with our district, and we would never know. So I don't think that this is the right venue to be trying to identify that.
Moving on to policies 320, 420, and 520. Freedom of speech outside of the school setting for administrative, professional, and classified staff. The committee had no changes suggested. The policy outlines fundamental stipulations. Our attorney also recommended the repeal of policy 321 and 421, political activities as its content is covered in other policies. And we'll be talking about, I think it's 819, a little later in this conversation. I think that there might be some comments on this, so please, anybody speak up. Policy 322, 422, 522, gifts and administrative guidelines for administrative, professional, and classified staff. The policy right now, the policy as it stood before, said, "The staff member may accept gifts of nominal value not to exceed $50 per gift, only from students or parents." We've suggested changing that to, "Staff members may accept gifts of nominal value from students or parents. Nominal value shall be defined in the accompanying administrative guidelines." Then the administrative guidelines refer to the P.A. Ethics Act, which require disclosure of a statement of financial interests. And there was, the P.A. Ethics Act, if I read it correctly, says, just so we're all on board with what we're agreeing to, if we agree with this, "The name and address of the source and the amount of any gift or gifts valued in the aggregate at $250 or more, and the circumstances of each gift need to be disclosed." So different, this was one that was also, generated a lot of discussion. There are some school districts who have taken the path of, hey, we don't want any gifts at all. So as a comparison, I'm just going to read you, for example, Lower Marion's policy, and know that ours is different. But if the board feels strongly that they would like something like this, this is why I'm bringing it, just so we're all on the same page, and we all know that nothing's set in stone, but we need to decide these things. And in policy, because there were only three of us, I felt like we needed broader representation for something that, like this. So Lower Marion School District writes, "The board considers the acceptance of gifts by employees an undesirable practice. One, gifts often lead to a feeling of obligation on the part of the employee. Two, students of limited means may feel an obligation to contribute beyond family means. Three, no student should feel obligated to make a contribution to a staff member. It is the policy of the board that employees may not accept gifts. The superintendent may approve acts of generosity to individual employees in unusual situations, but shall report such instances to the board in a timely manner." So that's an example of a school district who's gone one direction.
Can we put that into a little bit of context? Because I think I was pretty shocked at why Lower Marion...
Yes, please talk as much as you want.
Did that, Regina, you had shared that some of those gifts were like ski trips, like they were huge.
That's what was shared by the solicitor. It caused, it triggered, it was exorbitant gifts, and they found themselves in a position that, I don't believe in our district, we are in that situation. So we haven't had a need to curtailer or promote as strong language as they did.
And my recommendation would be to keep, to accept the policy as the policy committee proposed. I just want people to be aware that there is a more strict option, but we don't seem to have the same problems, luckily or unluckily, depending on the people who want an Aspen ski vacation. But if it, that this is the type of thing, that if the culture in our community changes, or we feel like it would be beneficial, then next year, come back and say, hey, I think there's a problem, let's relook at this. That would be my recommendation, and please speak up with any additions, comments.
I personally believe that Lower Marion is on the right page. I think that employees get paid. I think if we're going to allow employees to accept gifts, we should keep it at $50. I believe that not every child in this district can afford to gift their teachers, and I think that the ability to now change this policy to make it more than $50...
But here's the catch. It was $50 per gift. I could give a gift every day. I can give a gift because it's January 1st, I can give a gift because it's January 2nd, so the new policy actually, believe it or not, more restrictive.
I understand that, but I think that the, I really think that we should make it more restrictive than less restrictive. Because it really does, I've spent an awful lot of time in classrooms with raising my two kids, and it is heartbreaking to see some of these kids in lower classes that cannot afford to gift their teachers when they're sitting there while other kids are, just because, and the gifts, you know, are $50 gifts, but they're certainly purchased because they want to give their teacher a $50 gift. I think that we are in a position where we can make this work for the entire student body, and I really think that since we are in a service business, the consequence that we should always be looking at is, how does this affect our student, our students? I would really like to see it more restrictive than less restrictive, only my opinion as one.
The policy does state the purpose, we do say, "The board considers the acceptance of gifts by professional staff members an undesirable practice." However, I'm still going to argue that I think that we should allow it, knowing that what I've observed from the culture of the elementary schools in this time and age is that often there, if there are gifts, it's often organized by homeroom parent, and every single child is part of it, regardless of whether or not money's donated. They are 100% included as a member of the gift giving, and sometimes it's a bunch of flowers. Like, it may not be anything elaborate, but it's presented from the class to the teacher sometimes. So, I don't know. I mean, I'd love to hear other board members, because I'm one of nine.
Steph, I have a question. Does this take into account those instances where parents or other people within the community could be using gifts or opportunities to curry favor for their students as far as coaching opportunities or things? I think I've maybe witnessed a little bit of that in the past, where you, there are parents who provide a lot of things to certain people.
I'm going to let Regina handle that, because I don't have any knowledge or opinion on that.
I think one of the things, when we went through this policy, and I think our solicitor had shared, we can have a policy, we do have many policies that we are obligated to comply with, and there are administrative guidelines to help the administration implement the policy. And the reality is, no matter how tight the policy is from our perspective, there is no restriction or, there are still parents in Lower Marion who will purchase gifts and give them to the teacher. And I think that reality exists. I think what the purpose of the policy is, is to send the message so no one feels obligated to do that, that we're discouraging that practice.
And also discouraging anybody on staff from accepting those, and putting themselves in jeopardy in the district in jeopardy by doing that.
Yes, yes.
And now, now there is the trigger that, and there's much more in the P.A. Ethics Code, but there is the trigger that they are required to report on certain thresholds for certain different gift acceptances.
Yes, and that is the policy, and Mr. Linderman does a great job in making sure our employees know that they have that obligation to report that.
I have a question. It's either the middle school or the high school, when they have the Thanksgiving lunch dinner for the parents, the parents, sorry, for the teachers, when they have, which they probably won't have with the change in calendar, but during the conferences, there's, it'll be a different time, there's a dinner or lunch organized for the teachers, and there's prize baskets that I think they're raffled off, but would that be considered a gift? So they can win a gift basket that has restaurant gift cards and things like that? Is that, is that a gift? I mean, how does that...
I think because you're setting it up as a raffle, you're not buying that gift for that specific teacher for a specific reason.
Thank you.
So what's the, in conversation, how do people feel about keeping the, and just thoughts, if people think that we should bring it back to committee to reconsider? Or should we wait till next week and see how the vote goes?
I mean, I'm in favor of the nominal value, and with the discouraging language in it. I mean, I have to say, I don't, I don't want administration also to spend time trying to value things, and figure out if things are on sale or not on sale, or are we one cent over, or we, like, we have other bigger fish to fry. I think that the teachers are required by state code to report ethics stuff, so there's a bigger stick there that comes into play than the district can possibly do, because the state's also got that stick. I think we're making the statement saying that we really, you really don't need to do this. If somehow you feel moved to it, it really needs to be a nominal value, and the teachers, everybody needs to be on the same page with that. I just don't, I don't know that we want to put a lot of extra time, energy, and resources into this in particular, trying to police it.
I also don't have a problem with leaving it the way it is.
I have heard from a few elementary school parents that I did reach out to, and they said actually removing the $50 would relieve the pressure, because we're leaving a nominal value. And so they're like, okay, now I'm okay with just cookies. Like, I don't need to get a gift certificate for 25 bucks. Like, I can give cookies or a note or something. So I'm curious as to what'll happen. I understand your concerns, so whatever the will of the board is, happy to back it.
Yeah, the only thing I take exception to really is calling it nominal value, because it's subjective. So one person looks at $50 as a nominal value, and another person, especially in our socioeconomic makeup, looks at nominal value as $250. So that's, that's the only, I don't like subjective phrases. That's why I would prefer $50. But, but I'm fine with the policy.
See, to me, $50 isn't nominal, so $50 is a lot.
Yeah, but I'm fine with it, and you're the head of the committee, so I'd like to see us know what direction it's going in before we leave tonight.
Six of one, half dozen of another at this point for me. I support the way it's revised.
I'm fine with the recommendation.
So let's, as the chair, I would say I'd keep it the way it is, and then just know next year, if anybody has concerns, let's bring it back, look at it again, and change it if we need it.
Fine, thank you.
Policies 323, 423, 523, smoking tobacco for administrative, professional, and classified staff. These policies now include electronic smoking devices. Any kind of tobacco product or device is banned from school property. This covers lit and unlit substances. Again, it does include electronic smoking devices and products. This policy means that staff may not smoke on school grounds, even in their cars. They would need to leave the district property to smoke under this policy. And again, these policies are just about staff, not about students. They're covered in a different policy, which we already talked about.
This includes even non-tobacco products that are in smokeless devices, because that, we did talk about that. So I just want to make sure people don't think that they can smoke cupcake-flavored air, and that's okay, it's nothing.
Correct. Questions, comments? No.
How is this changing from the other version?
People will have to smoke on campus?
No.
But it didn't, it didn't, it did not address the electronic devices, Phil. It only, just the cigarettes.
Policy 324, 424, 524, personal files and administrative guidelines for administrative, professional, and classified staff. This policy was actually made less restrictive. Let me talk about it. The policy contained language that limited the number of times an employee is able to access their personnel file. It said that they were allowed to, the employer was allowed to access it once, and their agent could access it once. The committee recommended that the limit be removed. The policy states that the employee's medical records and records relating to their hiring are kept in a separate file and not accessible, but they may access information about evaluations and observations. And there was no change in that, that's just the law. So the, what we're talking about here is letting people access their record more, and I just think that's a smart thing to do. And they still need to make an appointment. It's not like someone's going to come in every day and ask to see their record, so I would fully support expanding access. Policy 407, student, teacher, student, teachers, interns, and administrative guidelines. The guidelines state the teachers are not required to have student, teachers, or interns in their classroom. In number six of the administrative guidelines, language will be changed to state that the principal... language will be changed to state that the principal may have the opportunity to meet with the candidate rather than shall meet. That's to allow flexibility. The goal still is to have the principals and the superintendents involved. We want to make sure that anybody coming into our schools is devoted to our kids and is there for the right reasons. But it just allows some flexibility with the timing on that one. Policy 302, Employment of Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent. This is very relevant for us because there's a change in the amount of notice that's required. This policy was deferred from the September meeting date pending updates in school code. The update was made, changing the 150-day notice to 90-day notice that a board is required to give the superintendent, assistant superintendent prior to the end of their contract regarding the board's intent to retain or consider other candidates. So this is totally applicable to what we do as a board.
And we all have a choice in this. This is state law change.
So what is precedent in the case where it's stated in a contract one way versus the law the other way?
The attorney said that the code will rule on this one. So it doesn't matter what it says now. It has to be 90 days.
Just making sure.
I just had a simple question. It's not related to the notice. I just, when we reading it, I saw that it says there's... At one point, it says you need a vote by the majority vote of all board members. And another place, it says you need to have five or more board members. So I wondered what that meant. Does that mean if you didn't have a full board of eight people, you know, someone was dropped off the board, you would only need a majority in one case and five in the other? I was just confused by the difference in the language. If someone could clarify.
Well, five is a majority of all board members. So if you only had five people at a meeting, all five would have to vote for it because that's a majority of all board members. It's not a majority of those present. So that's where that comes from.
Okay, it didn't mention present. I... Thank you.
Okay. Administrative Guidelines, Policy 808, Food Services. Nicole Melia has been working with the attorney around language related to publicly identifying or stigmatizing students who are unable to pay for a meal or have delinquent meal account. Obviously, we're trying to minimize any of this. So she's been doing a fantastic job, and that's the policy. Policy 919, Campaigning and Other Political Activity on District Policy. This is a new policy which details the expectations of district employees with respect to campaigning and other political activity on district property and at school-sponsored events. I would love for Dr. Gafredo or the superintendent to feel free to throw in any thoughts on this one.
And this is a new policy recommended to aspire legal counsel. So in the conversations that we had, one, let me point out, this is not pertaining to board members. It's very specific. The language, I believe, is worded as "employees of the district." Basically, it just, with some of the heated and contested elections of late, there have been issues. Many school districts use their buildings and schools as polling grounds. So our counsel really recommended that we have some sort of policy in place. This would really... People, obviously, when they're on Great Valley time, they're on Great Valley time not to be campaigning. However, after hours, you'll see within the policy, certain conduct campaigning is certainly permissible, even if it's on Great Valley property after the workday. And so it really just helps to articulate and define that. We've had nothing really in place, considering that we do use schools as polling places, and we do have employees who are there. It's certainly advisable by our attorneys to have a policy in place. And so this was the first draft in working consultation with Whistler Perlstein.
I had an observation on that one, too. I again think it's important, especially regarding employees. But there's a line right in the first part of Purpose, the third paragraph. It says, "This policy shall apply to campaigning and other political activity by community members and other third parties." So I was curious as to how we would interpret that. Because, for instance, at the Patriots Day, there was a political party that had a table, and there could be local candidates who want to have a table there. Would that preclude them from having that? Because this applies to the whole community, not just employees.
Yeah, I believe we had talked about that in Policy, about what we would do at Patriots Day. And again, thinking of the spirit, I mean, those that were there helped me think back to the conversation.
I think the idea was that when we have volunteers, when we have parents, when we have other community members who come into the schools to provide additional programming in the schools, that they cannot then use that as like a bully pulpit, so to speak. That the idea was that if it's Patriots Day and you're purchasing a table, that that's your free speech right? And that's not... You're not in that moment acting...
You're not trapped. You can walk away.
Yes, and you're also not acting like if you've been brought in to do a presentation on... I don't know, like, the day of people who were brought in, right? That is our presentation. That's what you're supposed to be there for. That you can't then say, hey, I want you to vote for this candidate or that candidate. But that if you're using it on your own time and your own thing, and it's not part of the official school day, that those... We can't preclude people's right to free speech and to be able to purchase tables for that at Patriots Day or whatever other events may come up in the future. That's my recollection of it.
And as long as we're being equitable to not disallow. So, for example, Patriots Day, everyone is able to go through the high school to secure a table. And if they're a district employee, that is not on their time that they're employed to be doing teaching, for example. So that was the equitable piece of it, that we're not discriminating. But we're also not holding a captive audience.
I would just suggest that unless it's elsewhere, further down in the policy that I missed, to me, that paragraph, I mean, obviously, a lawyer would know best, but the paragraph seems like it says never, ever can anything happen on the grounds even of a community member. So either there has to be something around it not being during school time or something that makes that understandable when it is allowed, if we are indeed allowing it.
So I got a question, since this pertains to not just employees. So a few years ago, Mr. Obama, at the time, came to the high school. Would this now preclude him from coming? Or any other presidential candidate? Because it is a political rally, no matter how you view that.
Well, this is campaigning, right? So I know when Obama came, he wasn't campaigning. That's why I asked him.
I'm just curious, would this now preclude something like that? Which, whether you favor Mr. Obama or not, it was a great thing for Great Valley. If we could get every presidential candidate to come, it would be wonderful. But does this now say that's not allowed?
All right, and that's a good question. That's certainly something I'd like me to take back to counsel and have a conversation. I think, Samantha, with some of the questions you're raising, just to go back and...
And where's the line, right? I mean, governor, candidate, I mean, you gotta... I mean, where is that line that says this is okay and this isn't? Maybe it's... Nothing's okay. I don't know. But I just thought back of, what was that, 12 years ago or so, or whatever it was?
From that all the way down to, you know, we've had township supervisor candidates, you know.
Right, but this was actually running in... But this was in the high school, during the school day, the entire student body, of which some of those kids were voting age. Not being, whatever you want to say, in front of the...
And you allow it, but you give equal access to the other party. I mean, that's just my gut reaction.
Well, but that's not what this states.
So can I request that we take this particular policy back to committee?
Sounds great.
Yeah, I could get some clarification from Whistler Perlstein, bring it back to committee when we meet on February 6th, and see what we can re-craft or address some of the issues that were raised here this evening.
Well, and I also think we need to give this committee a little more... A little better hand as to what do we want to see on this. Because the way this reads right now, Dave, you're 100% right. Obama would not have been able to do that. Some of those kind of things are also beneficial and tie into our curriculum. So I think what we need to be instructing this committee is, what really do we want to see from this policy? Do we really want to preclude everyone from everything, from doing or saying anything that starts with a P?
And that was my point, where I think they gotta go back and seek some additional input from the solicitor, and then come back and say...
I think let's talk to the lawyers as a common sense, just to look at other school districts because maybe somebody found the perfect answer instead of re-venting the wheel. Not rush this through. And if anybody has any comments to any of the policy members, if you want to attend policy committee, please feel free. And the goal is to get it right. You know, if we need extra time, so be it.
I think the most important thing for me, Steph, would be to see what they're recommending. They're recommending this policy. Are they actually recommending that we preclude every single solitary thing?
He'll take it back to the lawyer, ask these specific questions, and get some feedback for all of us. And if you want to communicate to all of us, that would be great, or save for the next meeting, whatever's best.
Very good. Yeah, thank you.
I just want to clarify, we are pulling this from next week, correct? Okay.
Well, just to clarify, next week would only be a second reading anyways of all these. Right, yes. Right, yeah.
I'm done.
Thank you very much for keeping it short, sweet, and simple. Well, it's good. A lot of policies, and it's good that we're doing this.
Two more years, Dave, two more years.
As we learned earlier, it's one of the most important things we do is setting policies, so. All right, next up is the Facilities Report and the Facilities Committee.
Yes, so the Facilities Committee, we met for the first time in 2018 on Tuesday, January 18th. We did take a little bit of a dive into the five- and 10-year projected plans for our facilities maintenance, including the need for some long-term funding and some planning with that long-term funding. We're planning to take a much deeper dive in our next meeting. And I believe later tonight, during the budget presentation itself, we're going to at least take a small look at that, probably not in as much detail as we will in facilities, and potentially bring back. We also looked at the architectural study for the Baxton Hill land because we want to make sure that whatever we do with that, we retain enough land for us to work with it, as well as helping out the community and doing what we can do with that. The other thing that the committee was charged with that's a little bit new this year was looking over the proposed and ongoing developments in each municipality and continuing to take a look at that. And we've provided in board docs, there's our preliminary document. We, as a committee itself, are taking a look at other things we want to see in the document. If someone else has something else that they want to see on the document, if you can just let me know, so that we can take a deeper dive into that in the next Facilities Committee meeting as well. I don't know if anyone else has any other comments from our meeting. Our next Facilities meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, February the 13th at 6 o'clock.
All right, thank you. Nothing under transportation or food service. We will jump to finance. Tonight, we'll do the first run-through of the budget. We're also going to do a quickie of the audit, not as lengthy as last year since virtually everyone attended the audit review in December. I'll tell you that later on down the road, the final audit report is there in December. You only receive the draft, the final audit with the MDNA. And it is listed on the agenda for tonight for you. Also, the comprehensive annual financial report is also there, which is kind of a fancy version of the audit. So in the budget, you know, this review, we're going to go over three different areas. We'll go over the audit, and I'll just kind of fly through that since we've already done it, and it's getting late, and it's maybe going to snow. So, and some of us have to get up at 3:30, 4 o'clock, so.
You could just call it now. I'm still here.
Yeah, unfortunately for Tyler, that if we have one more day before President's Weekend, we make that up. He's hoping for no snow days till after that. Okay. We'll take that under advisement.
No gifts, but cookies are coming your way with that two out of the way.
So the auditor's report, you all heard that, and a copy of it is actually in there for you, the final one. And the page numbers all stay the same. So as you recall, when the auditor came in and talked to us, the audit report card was good. No unmodified, which is the best we can get. No internal control weaknesses or deficiencies. Results of our operations, just kind of a little thing if you were following here. On page 10 of the MDNA, which wasn't in the draft you saw in December, you'll see the changes in fund balances for General Fund and Capital Projects Fund and all the other funds for 2016, between 2016 and 2017. I'm not going to go through that, other than that we did reduce... Every fund was reduced in fund balance, other than the Food Service Fund, which...
I'm an excellent.
There you go. And then this next slide just talks about the pension liabilities, which kind of deflate our financial operations. It deflates everybody in the state's financial obligations. We have $145 million chunk of that multi-billion-dollar pension liability, of which, you know, the General Fund is on the hook for $145 million, Food Service Fund for 1.6 million. That $145 million is $23 million over last year. So some preliminary projections for us. This is a chart showing our assessed value growth. And as you can see, it's got a pretty big jump for this year. That has a lot to do with your willingness to do reverse appeals and the addition of some pretty substantial developments in our area. The tax revenues from new construction is up, and that was what it was last year. Last year's large number and this year's large number combining are seeing what you're going to see in a tax duplicate for the coming year. We're projecting a lot more than we've already received because we have some big interims that were just built. The big apartment complex at Water, which does pay a lot of property tax, or will. Transfer tax, we're a little behind on, and I will... Then we have been on the past three years and are projected to be. And this big significance between this year and the last three years is there are no significant commercial transfers that we've had currently. So the past three years, we've always had at least one, maybe two or three significant commercial transfers. We will still be ahead of the budget, but not by as much as we were in the prior years. The residential sales have been kind of carrying the water this year. You can see, this is what happened last year, month by month. So red is this year, and the blue is last year. Last year, we had a gigantic sale. That was the Liberty Property Sale. And you can see that while we're doing a little better every month, most of that, you know, a big majority of that is residential. Investment revenue trend continues to grow at a very snail's pace, although the interest rates have been jumping up. When you go back to 2008, '09 and prior, we were sad if we got 5% or 6% return on our investment. Now, we are still five times away from that. Although we do think we're going to project this year to finally get back to a point at or above where we were in 2009, '10. Our preliminary projections for the year, based on our budget, we do anticipate revenues to be slightly higher due to the increase in interim taxes, although not as dramatic as last year. Last year, if you recall, the auditors talking between our interims and our transfer taxes, we were over budget in there. And they actually recommended we continue to budget at the same way because at any given time, like happened in 2008, '09, you know, the bottom could get pulled out for money again. If you're budgeting $2.5 million for transfer tax, and then the next year, it's $600,000, which was not too far off of what we ended up doing in 2008 and '09 in those years. That's hard to make up. I will note that the expenditure number here this year, you can note that we are actually projected to overspend our budget, which we're working on daily. The number is mainly due to the fact that we budgeted for six less teachers, but actually increased our teaching staff by five and a half. So there's a net of 11 and a half teachers in the budget that I don't have. We don't have. You don't have. This is... Continues to be our biggest expenditure increase that we just can't seem to catch, is our increase in cost in special ed. You can see in 2007, '08, our gap, that's between the bottom line, the green and the red, are the state and federal revenues we receive for special education. You notice how that stays about the same, but our expenditures continue to increase. So 2007, '08, there was a $6.4 million gap between revenues and total expenditures in special ed. For 17, '18, we're projecting a $16.4 million gap in those expenditures. Healthcare costs, we've kind of paid attention to this one. Healthcare costs, we've kind of paid attention to this one. Like Phil said last month, I say this every month, no one pays attention, or, but here we are again. We've seen a pretty dramatic increase over the past two years. Last year, we had a significant increase, 16, '17, over 17, '18, and 17, '18, we're anticipating, that was 22.5%, and that was even carving out some of the, the ones that were reimbursed for stop-loss. And in 2017, '18, we're, we're projecting about a 20% increase in our actual expenditures for this year. So, as we dive into some things which may be able to help us control those, keep that in mind. Look quickly at the budget for next year. Pension issue is, is still a, an issue. We did have original projections. You see the pension number is going from 32.57% to 33.43%. Originally, that, that 33.43% was going to be a little over 34%. The actuaries at the, pension fund, Peasars, recommended a reduction in that. However, you do see, we're going to still end up at 36% by 2021, '22. This added 3/4 of a million dollars to our expenditure budget, just this one area. Now, this, this chart here shows what the cost value, that was the percentage you pay, and this is the cost in thousands of what your budget is for pensions. So, $14 million of your, your total expenditure budget is, is dedicated to pension costs, where in 2001, 2002, I still keep that number on there. It was kind of the low point for pension numbers. It was $270,000. I will add that all through those years, the employees paid the same amount, 7.5% or 6.5%, depending on when they were hired. But at that point in 2001, the state and the school districts were paying like 1% and falling behind rapidly.
And just to clarify for everybody else, our, our rate, that's not because we did, that's because the state sets our pension rate.
Correct. It goes unsaid that many items are variable, and we've just listed them there. Our population growth, as we've seen recently, we've had a pretty big bump in student enrollment and are anticipating that next year this time, we'll be talking about that again. State budget, things that have, we have little or no control over. Assessment appeals, you know, we, we are, we've done a lot of the, and I hate using the cliche, low-hanging fruit. We're, we're getting the higher hanging fruit right now, but at, at some point, all the fruit will be gone, and we'll be where everybody should be. You know, just to be noted, Chester County, once Delaware County does their reassessment, which got forced into not too long ago, Chester County will be one of the older reassessment bases. So, we went from 1972 to 1976 without a reassessment. Now, it's 19, or 1972 to 1996. Now, we're 1996 to 2018, and, and that's going to be at least a couple of years from that, even if they were forced into it before they would do it. So, they're already going to be passed as long as they were before, between the other reassessments. These are our reserves per the, the audit reports, 16, '17, we're at about 18.4 million. Budgeted, we're, we're, that's just a budget number. We projected to go down a little bit. Will that go down that far? I'm not sure. Depends on if we can get our expenditures under our budget. This is, this is a chart we've been sharing for a, quite a few years now. It's our planned use of reserves. And as you, you can see, note this year, we plan to use our last bit of pension reserve for the 18, '19 year. It's about a little over 1.4 million, and an additional about 2.1 million, so make it 3.5 million. So, this will be the last year we have any pension reserve available. Our debt schedule, this is the year we can budget less for debt. We'll talk about this more in the Property Finance Committee meeting, and I'm going to talk in a slide or two about our facilities committee's desire and our desire to have a plan. Our buildings are getting older. The middle school will be entering its 19th year this fall. I mean, I just can't emphasize that enough. We've got quite a few big projects, a lot of major, really, most of our buildings hadn't, haven't had any major rejuvenation. Even the roofing projects we're talking about, those are things that weren't done during the renovations. So, you know, like any house, you're going to have to upgrade your major systems and mechanical systems. So, in the budget, here's what our major increases are. There's 900,000, almost a million in salaries, and most of that, I have to tell you, is due to having the budget for the extra teachers that are in the budget this year that weren't budgeted for this year. Benefits are going up $2 million. You know, big, big hunk of that is pension. The other big hunk is, is healthcare, because most everything else stays relatively the same. And special ed, as we discussed, it's, we've been chasing this budget number. It's kind of like the coyote chasing the Road Runner. We're just never quite catch it, and we just keep throwing numbers that you get at Acme at it. So, I, I wish we could catch that number. Other schools are up. There's a, a big chunk in the, in the, our vocational technical school at Pickering. They changed their funding formula a little bit, not to our benefit, not, you know, contrary. Transportation, that's actually a relatively small amount in consideration. And other financing, now here's where we're going to talk a little more, not as much now, it's just kind of a throw-it-over-your-head type thing. We'll talk a little more at the Finance Committee meeting in February and subsequently at the Facilities Committee. You have $4.2 million in debt service. The recommendation is that we reallocate 3.4 million of it to capital projects, especially given the need for the, the $3 million roof at the high school, and that doesn't count some of the other things that the Facilities Committee talked about. I mean, we're going to struggle to keep that total budget for facilities, the, for capital projects next year, under $4 million. It has a very low amount. You saw in the slide back in the audit, there was $4.1 million. That was at the end of last year, not counting what we spent for, you know, already this year. We'll have better numbers on that at the Finance Committee meeting when we come up. And also, we're also recommending that the, that we budget an additional 800,000 in the General Fund under technology, so that would be used for things like the one-to-one program, which would be the major chunk of that, and also the technology infrastructure. And we feel moving this to General Fund will allow, allow the programs, both programs to continue with kind of a more stable funding mechanism. So, you know, the worst thing you'd want to do is to be 3/4 of the way through the one-to-one and then run out of money. So, we will discuss these, that specifically, at the Finance Committee meeting in, in February. So, the budget, building the budget, staffing's our biggest chunk there. 71.6 million debt, which was almost 10% last year, is now down to 4.9%. Support the other schools, those are things like the, the vocational technical school, charter schools, Chester County Intermediate Unit, any approved private schools we send students to. Transportation. Infrastructure, which, which is basically maintaining our facilities, and this, this isn't, has nothing to do with the capital fund. This is day-to-day. You know, it's warm in here. Well, it's actually cooling down in here, because I changed from heating to air conditioning there. Sorry. Cleaning supplies, you know, day-to-day things that we need to do to operate, operate the buildings. Operating costs, which are basically educational activities that, that go on between our curriculum needs, our, our books, our supplies, our teacher training, and about, and some of that operating cost also, some of that goes to legal services, outside professional services. So, and then the budgetary reserve. Now, this is the very small amount we reserve in the budget, which was going to the capital fund. And I'll add that in 16, '17, that's the only amount we transferred last year, was, was that. And quite frankly, this amount may not be transferred this year, because I'm, of the concern for going over budget. I want to make sure we have some money, so we're holding off that transfer, which could be done, because it's budgeted. It could be done anytime now. So, so total budget, 106 million, so we've crossed the nine-digit threshold. We stayed below it last year, barely, but we're about over that. You can see that as we get closer to the adoption date, we're hoping to reduce this by some, but some of that's going to probably depend on some programming decisions and some staffing decisions that we'll have, we'll have to make. Okay, revenue-wise, our sources, revenue sources are, are up a little bit because of our increase in our, our tax base. Our state sources really only went up to reflect the addition of the pension increase that we have, so about 375,000. Has a lot to do with the pension increase. The state reimburses us for half of the pension cost in any given, in any given year. Federal sources is also a very small amount, so we have about a $4.8 million budget gap at this point. With the proposed use of 3.5 million in reserves, we're about $1.3 million different right now. Enrollment, you saw the big bump this year was, was about 5%. This number doesn't look like it's going up very much, but remember, this is a three-year average, so really, the one-year, the large one-year is just 1/3 of the calculation. Next year, if we have a similar one, those numbers will, will change mathematically, because now two of the three years will, or two of the three years will be higher. So, we continue to monitor them. Elementary enrollment, we, the, the significant jump was in elementary enrollment this year. Of the 200 kids, 145 of them were from the, were for the elementary school, and I think 144 of them went to Markley, but not quite, but it was pretty, pretty big. So, it looks like they're flattening. These numbers could change a little bit, too. We will still go by these class size guidelines. I don't know if Regina wants to talk about these, but we heard from many people who said how the budget cuts affected all the classes at the certain levels, and I can assure you, if there were budget cuts, I didn't see them, so.
And I, I think one of the questions that continually comes up is, how did we add staff and we didn't count on adding staff? We operate within these class size guidelines, and I can tell you, Dr. Gafredo was working feverishly in August as our class sizes were continually growing. We were on a, in some cases, hourly call based upon the enrollment of students coming, what, what grade, frankly, and what building they were in, which pushed it over. And in some cases, we did start the year at or one or two above the range. And those decisions were made as efficiently and as close to the time we could, while keeping in mind that when you do add another section, you have to, you have to make sure you're preparing to have that class start at the same level as every other class in that. So, it really was a balancing act, and I'm very, very happy to say that our classes are very much within the range and at the top side, top side of the range. So, it really was a balance of being fiscally responsible, as well as staying within the programming guidelines that we have come to expect in all of our elementary schools, as well as middle and high school.
You want to do the next one, too?
For our staffing, again, at the secondary, the staffing proposed will be determined. We have done, and again, much to, much credit to the administration at the secondary level and working with Dr. Atul and Dr. Gafredo, Ms. Beck, in really looking at the class size guidelines at the secondary level, middle school and high school, as well as maximizing the programming in those areas. So, we will continue to look at how we can utilize staff at multiple levels. We did add the, at the elementary level, STEAM, that sixth to collapse everyone to a six-day cycle, and what that did was trigger a movement of high school staff moved to middle school and middle, middle school staff moved to elementary, and that was an effort to offer programming to the level of which we've become accustomed, while not adding staff for those areas. And we'll continue to do that. At the elementary, although we are looking at a potential net decrease due to the realignment, the movement of some of our students from Katie Markley to General Wayne and balancing out that population, but we are not looking at making a change. So, we don't want to count on a reduction and find ourselves not in that position to do that. So, we're looking at no change at the elementary. Special education, again, when we've spoken about this at multiple meetings, much of the areas under special education and pupil services are dictated by IDEA or Chapter 16. So, a lot of the student-to-teacher ratio, whether class size guidelines, roster guidelines, caseload guidelines are dictated to us by the federal government. So, we will, and Dr. Wexler works very hard to make sure we're within those guidelines, because being out of them is opening yourself up to litigation. That truly is a financial drain, which does not impact quality of education for students. So, it, we're looking at a psychologist, elementary artistic support, speech and language, and high school learning support. And those increases are due to our increasing needs for evaluations and servicing the needs of our students.
I just have one question in the special ed section. The learning support position, is that a teacher? What is that?
Yes. What we have is a special education program renewal that, or SEPRN, we have to submit to the state, and it is as detailed as the full-time equivalent, or the teacher, and the number of students on the caseload, and how you dictate the class dictates the number of students that are able to be on that caseload. So, and it's not wiggle room, it's, it's a hard cap. So, the high school learning support would be a 1-0, a full-time equivalent, one teacher, to provide learning support with stu, for students with disabilities that are in the, so those students would, in their NOREP, or their Notice of Recommended Educational Placement, assigned to a learning support teacher. So, yes, a teacher.
So, in the past, we utilized teachers when we've made cuts in the past, prior to you. We have hired teachers for some of these special education positions that were not special education certified. Will this teacher be a special education teacher?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
So, I don't need answers now, but we need to, I think, seriously sharpen our pencil a little bit. And it's not to say those positions aren't needed. However, a year ago, we talked about a shrinkage happening that didn't happen, and now we're talking about adding without readjusting. So, my challenge would be to look at how we can be more efficient with what we have. However, you guys can figure that out, because as Chuck said, we were at a net 11 and 1/2 compared to what we thought we'd be at. And now, to add six more, I think we need to take a serious look at how we do things. So, that's my challenge for you guys over the next couple of months, to look at how does that number stay at a net of zero or less?
Absolutely, understood.
And also, I, I have one comment, Chuck. If you go back to the slide where you are, let me just get it here, where you show the budgetary reserve. So, you know, already, so we're looking at a budgetary reserve of .7 million, which I understand, and, and that makes sense. The, what Dave is suggesting... The, what Dave is suggesting, I think, is so much more important this year because according to where we at, where we're at with our facility spending, ordinary items, which weren't even on our budget, we've spent more than what that budgetary reserve is in this budget year. We've, we've spent close to $800,000 in addition to what was budgeted in facilities, not because of any other reason, but we absolutely had to. So when I, when I look at things like that and then see, okay, we've got a budgetary reserve of .7%, which would certainly cover any of that, now we're looking at 11 new positions. I, I don't, there's a lot of things we need to take a look at as we drill down because.
No, I agree. But, you know, 11 new positions is closer to 1.5 million than it is to 700,000.
And that's exactly what I'm saying. So when you add that to the already 800,000 that we know we're over in facilities, and you look at, we only have an opportunity to put so much in that budgetary reserve line. It's, we are way over. And I'm getting nervous every time I look at the slides, so.
And I have to say, just to piggyback on the back of that, I'm very nervous that we're using reserves for continual, I mean, and I know we have some planned for this. But because of what I know is coming in capital as we start to build that budget in more detail, I'm very, very worried that we're constantly spend, we're deficit spending every year for general things that we want to do. And then I know what's coming, these, I'm just, and, and there's only so far we're going to delay them before we're going to have another major collapse of something. And I'm not suggesting it's going to happen today, tomorrow, the day after. But there are some pretty major stuff that is on the horizon in facilities. And the fact that our general budget is deficit spending and we're unable to transfer any money over to facilities is very worrying to me that we're doing this with ongoing money because what happens when we run out? And that's kind of how I feel like the state didn't look at it either. And here we are with our pension issue, so.
It, it will cause us to defer these items. We've been deferring items. And we will be, we will be deferring items forever. And we have no opportunity to be proactive. And if we can't be proactive, it's, we're going to wind up spending a lot more money.
I think when we look at here, too, and we keep adding people, I mean, if you go back many slides earlier, I mean, our most significant cost is the contract, healthcare and associated benefits. So adding six positions seems innocuous. It looks nice generally on a piece of paper. So you start adding up the numbers associated with that, not this year, but next year and the following year. And these numbers continue to increase. And when you overlay that on the obligations that are placed on the district, I have concerns about last year misfiring on the added number of positions that we agreed to. I look at this number here, and I understand this is generally the first discussion we're having about this, you know, publicly. But if six positions, is that going to turn into eight to 10? Is that really going to be six? I mean, you're saying there's no change in elementary, secondary TBD. I mean, that doesn't give me any confidence that we're not adding 10 or taking 20 away. I don't know. And I'm going to agree with Dave, and I think some other, the sentiment that was discussed tonight is that if we are adding positions, they better be absolutely necessary. They shouldn't be on a wish list of nice-to-haves, like, hey, this is great to have that. But, I mean, it, this, we're getting into serious money now. Once we get and break over that barrier of spending $100 million on education in the school district, where just several years ago, we weren't even close to that. I would like to see that number at zero. And, and we have talked about this for the past two to three years, about looking at unnecessary programs, programs that are past due, that are not necessarily on par with the focus of this district with STEM, with the 21st century education, underutilized programs where we don't have a lot of people in them. We need to look at those costs and, and start to remove them from the budget and use that as a base used to offset if you're adding more positions. It should be a one-for-one swap. And I think you need to look at things like, quite frankly, do we have to have full-time people doing this? Because that also impacts the benefits analysis and the ultimate cost of the district. So as we proceed into this discussion about budget, I think we, as a board, and, and the superintendent and Chuck need to spend some time really focusing on this because this is a significant amount of money. I'm concerned about going over $100 million. I've been on the board for eight years. This is the first time I've seen that number pushed and proposed. I don't like it, and maybe I should like it. I don't know. I know there's costs we can't control. But there's costs that we can control. And I'd like to see us exercising more of that control as we discuss this moving into the next budget. So those are my preliminary thoughts on this. But, you know, with adding personnel, I mean, those are just significant costs. And we just, we need to figure out a way to manage this better to the extent that we can.
And I just want to say that we've done this in the past. This board has taken hard lines every year at budget time, and the administration has also. But I'm, I want, and, and I'm just going to speak for me, I definitely would like this done in the way that it needs to be done. I don't want the admin coming back, as admins have in the past, and said, you wanted us to shave 4 million, here's your 4 million. And we wound up spending years putting back what we let go of because we've had administrators in the past that have placated the board. I don't want to see that happen. I would charge you with coming back to either defend what you bring us or do what Phil is suggesting. I think it's really important to us as a district to realize what's been done in the past. I don't want to see that done again.
Well, I don't think anybody's advocating just cutting the cut. I think that the challenge is, is to evaluate what we have and are we utilizing it to our maximum capabilities? And I get where special ed laws are dictated, and we may need that for people into special ed to keep us out of all kinds of legal issues with the state and et cetera. However, that doesn't mean we can't look at, how do we optimize somewhere else within the staff? Whether it's administrative staff or teaching staff or support staff, whatever it takes, that's all. I think anybody here is proposing it's not just cut the cut, it's to make sure we do it right.
I just want to make sure, too, that, I mean, we've gone a long time without putting significant money into capital. And I know that the debt service, the plan is to have this debt service. But I also have seen what's in the quote-unquote wishlist for the capital fund. And a lot of it is stuff that, at some point, it's not going to be a wishlist. There's only so far we can push roofs. And there's only so far that we can push water mains. And there's only so far that we can push certain things before it's going to become a mandatory explosive payment that has to happen. And we have not been putting regular money into capital outside of that .7 million, which isn't very much when you look at the overall budget. So I'm just extremely concerned. I do not want, as, as we look at the next five years.
We're forward to your plan in the facilities.
I mean, we're taking a hard look at it, but, but there's going to be some really big expenses coming out of capital. And I'm just concerned that we keep, that that's a can that we keep kicking and that that can is starting to, you know, like a soda can, you can only shake it up so much before it explodes. And I'm worried that we're starting to reach that threshold of, where we might choose to defer to do some stuff with heating and cooling, but it's going to explode on us anyway. We don't have to.
That's the challenge of what the facilities committee was started for, to try to make sure we all understand that in a good system.
Well, on facilities, just a comment. I mean, I, I understand that the, the reason that the teachers weren't, we added teachers last summer was because we had increased enrollment above what we thought. So we have projections now. But we're only now going to start getting closer to the, to the townships and the developers to really understand that. And I think that's a big watch out, too, just because we could do what we want with this and mix it around and say, we're going to swap this for something else. But, you know, 50 new kids move in that we didn't expect, and we may have to hire teachers if we want to keep that guidelines. So something to keep in mind as well.
And I think that's a very valid point because if there are students moving in, at this point, we know, we know what's happening with that water. I mean, we should be able to look at that and understand what's being built, who's moving in there, in the anticipation of at least getting some advanced warning or notice as to the extent of the number of kids that are coming out of that, that particular development. And some of it is never going to be crystal clear and very precise if you get a definitive number. But you have a general sense that there's families moving in there or it's old people. And then we need, we need to pay attention to that because, you know, the reality is, is we know it's there. It's developing, families are moving in. And we need to spend a little bit more time focusing on that to ensure that, you know, there's not this big surprise in 12 months that, guess what? There's an extra 100 kids coming out of that development. We should know that by now, or at least be able to anticipate that and plan that into the budget, looking out here as we move forward.
And I think, Phil, one of the things we're, we're looking at in facilities is to not just look at water. There's a couple other 200 to 300 unit developments that are planned, that we have a little bit closer pulse on that on a regular basis from the school board. And that's part of why I say this is our first draft when you look through our documents for what is being proposed. And as administration and facilities takes a look at that a little bit more closely on a regular basis, realizing now that we do that the planning commissions are not exactly forthcoming with information, that we have to go after it more. I think that that's something that we're definitely hunting more now. And we'll have more reporting out from facilities with that.
I want to build on what you both said. And thank you, Phil, for that, that detail because we do need to find a way to look at, not just what the planning commissions are saying or the developers, but actually, when, when people start moving in, how many kids on average are there per townhouse there? How many kids are there on average per single-family home? And then project that, if there's 50 more being built, project that out. And I'm not sure how we find that, but we need to find a way to get around that data and really build it in. Like you said, it's, it's not just the projections but what's actually happening and then projecting that.
All right, more to come on that from facilities.
Regina, quick question. The 4.0 increase in special education, how many psychologists are there already on staff? How many speech and language? How many high school learning support?
We currently, right now, it's a little, it's a little, it's not as true to the number of psychologists because we have evaluations and they're tied to timelines. So what, we have four psychologists, five psychologists on staff. And we also contract with psychologists. You have 60 days, and that's dictated. So when you get a referral for an evaluation, you have 60 days to get that evaluation completed and in the hands of the parent. So during times of high volume, I don't know how else to say it, a lot of referrals come in. And those referrals are then deployed to the psychologists. We also do evaluations for out-of-district placements and our non-pubs, so, our non-public schools. So if, at high spikes of referral times, we contract out. So we have five psychologists, but we also contract with psychologists that are in those other services that Chuck had talked about in the budget, contracted services. So we have five. The idea is if we have, this psychologist will actually decrease our costs. It's not going to decrease the cost of staff because it's going to add to one area, but take away from our contracted costs because we pay an hourly rate to get those evaluations done.
Okay, thanks. And then maybe that English-language development coordinator could take a look at the use of apostrophes?
Yes, thank you.
Can, can you describe what those are? When you look at the two-point, the two, the two-person increase, English-language development coordinator, secondary reading specialist, can you just very briefly describe what those positions are? Are these people that are teaching teachers how to teach? Are these people that are teaching students how to learn or a combination of both?
Well, it would be, the idea would be to, for example, at the elementary, we have reading specialists. They actually work with students in the areas of reading. This would be at the secondary level for that same exact purpose. These are all in working with our students. And not necessarily new people. It could be redeployed positions. So people that are currently in another capacity could be reallocated for that purpose.
But even, even if they're reallocated, what you're saying is it's, then someone else would come into whatever they're doing now. So it would still be a net gain of two.
At this point, this is the preliminary projection.
But that's what I'm saying.
However, what we, what we ended up doing, it wasn't a net gain. What we ended up doing by moving high school to middle school, middle school to elementary, we ended up with a zero net gain because, quite frankly, we did not get the retirements that we were expecting. So we had an increase of 5.5. That increase would have been much more if we didn't redeploy our teachers, increase our class sizes at the high school and the middle school, and redeploy those teachers to another level or to a different position. So that was the reality of the situation. And that same thing could happen here. This is just the first blush at saying this is the staffing that's proposed.
Regina, am I wrong? But I seem to remember we, we did have a very lengthy discussion on the, the position for the psychologist because some of the problems that we had had were based on things that having another psychologist would have prevented. So am I on the, am I remembering this?
Yes. And if you remember, Dr. Wexler gave the presentation to the board, I believe it was, in November to explain, for example, the speech and language therapist. We had some students that were not evaluated, given an IEP. And if you remember, we were on corrective action due to the fact that we had students on articulation plans as opposed to having an IEP for speech and language services. That was deemed to be inaccurate. And it took quite a lot of time to transfer all of those students to deem, number one, if in fact they were eligible to receive an IEP. And number two, to determine whether or not there was any corrective measure that needed to happen based upon that department and those teachers. So your, your memory is absolutely accurate. And that is why the presentation was shared. And the information was shared with the board. If you remember, we were in corrective action, and we were just coming off of that corrective action. And that is the step that is taken when you have a violation, either procedural or substantive, with IDEA. And that's the vehicle that is used by the state and the federal government to help bring us back in line to the guidelines.
And then part of that was that we also, at the time that we had problems, that we were brought in on corrective action, we were utilizing, for some of these things, contract services. And if I remember correctly, part of Joanna's presentation was showing how, had we had our own employee in place at the time, we would not have been in that corrective action. And that they were starting to take a look at districts like ours that were using contract services for certain things within the land of special education a little bit differently. Wasn't, am I right? That was all part of that presentation? Okay, so I would just like to go out on a limb here and say, that's one of the things I'd like to see stay.
Thank you.
All right, you guys have heard the challenge on staffing.
Back to me. You saw all that staffing in November, okay? All that was presented in November, just, just. What's that? Okay, here's the Act One index. For the year, it's 2.4%. It's a little less than, than it was last year. Of course, it didn't matter this current year because we had no tax increase. Referendum exceptions, the biggest exception could be for special ed, which could be close to $2 million exception if we were to go with that. Retirement is phasing itself out because it's focused, it's grandfathered into the 2011, '12 salary matrix. So we get about 1.9 million from the Act One index, should, should that be the, the tax levy, which, again, as we said before, would still leave us $1.3 million short. So the millage, if you raise the millage to 21.29, 2.4% index or increase, that's what it would look like. At this point, we are recommending not doing the exceptions. Totally up to you. But, you know, from, from our standpoint, we're. Totally up to you, but, you know, from our standpoint, we're recommending not doing, not even proposing the exceptions. We know there's a lot of work to be done based on what we've heard. Fortunately for me, it's mostly work done by a superintendent and her faithful assistance. I'll just wait for the numbers. This would be the impact to the taxpayer should the full index be levied this year. So the average homeowner, it's about $119. The median homeowner, which is the kind of middle of the road, that's the median assessed value as determined by the Homestead Act. And most of our homes are well less than the average because, because they are, there's a lot of very high-valued homes that are pulling that average up. Chart we started doing a couple of years ago just shows since Act One has been in place, what the Act One index has been, what our millage index has been, and what the Social Security Cost of Living Index has been for each year. So as you can see, we actually were a little bit behind the Social Security Cost of Living Index as of this year's levy. Not that that matters, no one cares when they get their tax bill. Just to show you again, these are, these are the, this is an average, I haven't updated this with the 17, 18 numbers, but because of our zero increase this year, we will still be at the bottom because zero on zero is going to make it less. This is the average increase. We have the lowest average tax increase since Act One index of any school in the county. These are the tax rates in the county. You can see us over on the far right there on this chart. The bars in green are the school districts that do not enact a earned income tax. So as you can see, Westchester's millage is very slightly less than ours, but they do collect quite a few dollars in earned income tax. Again, we talked about these areas with gaps, and I'm not going to talk about them again. There's some budget timelines. If you want to stay within the index, you must adopt, there's two resolutions on the board agenda following this. One is to stay within the index, and one is to go through the Act One process and use possible referendum exceptions. If you do the, stay within the index, you must have a resolution adopted by January 25th, which means next Monday night, unless you do a special meeting. And then the preliminary adopt budget and the final budget would be as listed there. If you, if you would like to go for the exceptions, you would, we'd have to have a preliminary budget available no later than January 25th, so we would convert this into our state document, which is what they make us have available for next week, and it would be available. You would have to actually adopt that budget by Valentine's Day. So it would have to be the, we'd have to make the work session of February a voting meeting instead of a work session to do that. And then we would have to file for the referendum exceptions by March 1st, and the board's final adoption would be on the same timeline.
So next week, just to clarify, we will have to decide whether to vote to stay within the exceptions or?
Yeah, there's two, there's two.
Sorry, sorry, stay within the Act One index.
Yeah, there's what's called the preliminary budget and referendum resolution, that's 9.02. That would be if you wanted to have us apply. Doesn't mean you have to use referendum exceptions, just means that our budget process gets a little more elongated and escalates quickly now. 9.03 is the accelerated budget resolution, which basically says, now we're going to stay within the index, so you revert back to the old plan. So these are, these are dates that we would have to do things by, and I've made them our dates on there, so the 22nd, you need to do a resolution if you're going to do that. If not, on February 12th, you would need to adopt a preliminary budget officially, so that you would have to take this budget or a kind of modified version of this budget on the 12th and adopt it. And then you'd have to, April 16th would actually go away if you did the, if you wanted to do the referendums, but if you don't, then it becomes the preliminary budget. So you see, you have two more months to work on the budget and stay within the index. May 14th, if we did that, we'd have to have the budget available for inspection, which is 20 days prior, before the adoption, and we have to advertise it at the final budget adoption. A couple of things, we've updated these charts just for you, just a couple of the charts in there, it's our per pupil spending. Basically, not much change from last year, we're still higher than Unionville and TE. And this includes everything, so we haven't backed out debt or anything, this includes everything. Staffing ratios, this is, it did not get any better. We are still have the best teacher-student staffing ratio over TE and Unionville. I will note that while our number went down to 11.21 from, I believe, 11.6, their numbers went down also, so they've increased their staffing per pupil also. Although we still continue to be there. And then that's it, so seems like you have a lot of questions then. I'm hoping for sake of my sore throat, stuffy nose, and four o'clock wake-up call, there are no more questions. I'm kidding, you can ask.
More to come.
More to come.
All right, well, you're not done, so.
Okay.
Study for Becton.
Budget, budget, okay. Last month in December, we talked about the GVCO wanting to buy an additional five acres instead of the additional two acres that's in the original agreement of sale that you approved over two years ago to put a field house. We recommended, and you wanted us to continue to get an architectural study of the Becton Hill land. This is approval of that study. Anticipate getting some information from that, hopefully in time for the work session next month, or at the latest, the facilities committee, which is the next day, but hopefully it's for the work session that we'll deal with, with that. It just ensures that if the population continues to grow at the rate it's growing, you have an option of utilizing that land. Because right now, we are within, you saw the numbers for elementary, and at about 2032, I think it's, I go back, it's 1870 or something like that, at 2032 is when you need to really initiate, you would then be at 95% capacity in every elementary school. So at that point, you'd need to initiate some kind of feasibility study on what you want to do to help alleviate the potential school overcrowding, which may or may not come. But you wouldn't have to do that until you hit that number. You have a 9.05, which is really kind of nothing to do, it's similar, but it's the same, but not the same, it's the approval of the subdivision plan for Becton Hill. This is the approval of the seven acres that you already agreed to, so that the GVCO is doing. Inuvoo is a, is a, is a company that does a data collection for all of our health care, not just our medical, it's prescription, it's dental, it's a lot of things like that. It's, there's a lot of business intelligence models that they deal with. What happens is a lot of the, a lot of schools in the state currently use this, most of them out in the western part of the state, now some in Lancaster County area. They use this as a tool to ensure and monitor their, mainly their health care costs, because that's the biggest component of that, and your prescription costs. The cost is about, is about $11,000 a year. It does all kinds of things. One of the things it does that, more or less, if you recall, several years ago, we did a dependency audit to make sure nobody had any dependents on that were over age, or nobody had any spouses that have been divorced for three years that are on. And we saved the money, Gallagher did that in a shot, one time shot for us. They do this all the time. So you're going to, the word from the 200-plus school districts that currently use this is that just that little thing does it, but there are many other things. They analyze things such as, they will be able to dig deep into the data and look for things like, for example, maybe we have, based on our size, maybe we have 15 staff members who, who are positive for hepatitis C. And I don't know that, I'm just, percentage-wise, we probably have that many. In one of the districts that did this, they had, that's our size, they had that, and they found out that only nine of them were being treated. Now hepatitis C is a very treatable thing, you know, a couple pills, I make it sound simple, but you know what I mean, a little regimen of scripts, and you're cured. If you do not.
You're killing me.
Steph, I'm trying to make it simplified. But anyway, so the goal would then be, they would target the group that, that isn't doing it the same, because if you, if you contracted and real, it costs a lot more money than curing it. Is that better, Steph?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm not, I didn't mean it that way, you know what I meant. So it's things like that, they, you know, things, and things like the opioid thing is a problem. I mean, based on our, our numbers, we've probably got to the tune of, just one numbers, again, it's just math, just based on what a percentage of a, we probably have 20 to 30 staff members that are addicted. I mean, it's just, I don't say there are, maybe there's none, but mathematically, based on the averages, you probably have it, they help deal with that. I mean, one of the things I was amazed that they said is they're finding the, the place where the most opioids are prescribed. It's not from your orthopedic surgeon, it's not from, you know, whatever, it's from your dentist, you know? My guy did not give me any when I busted my tooth two weeks ago, but anyway. So anyway, we're proposing that, I'm sorry, I know it's late. We've talked about this in the past, it's the upgrade of the Johnson Control Camera There's an EBS work statement, there are contracted tech people. Donation from the PTO, general, or Great Valley Middle School. When the, when I retire, no one else will ever say General Wayne Middle School. You went there, all right? But, so I keep, I will call it General Wayne Middle School till I die, so. You have a couple of approved private school agreements there. You have a speaker agreement at the high school for a TEDx thingy. And as I alluded to earlier, you, first time you'll see our CAFRA is there, our final audit report. Jen alluded to, you have a report on our new developments in the, in the, in the school district. Superintendent is hosting a meeting next week with all of the township officials to kind of talk about ways where we might better get that information. And, you know, Dolores was able to win us the meritorious budget award again for, I don't know how many years in a row, but it's 20-something. You have the couple monthly reports there, staffing and year-to-date spending, and that's it.
All right, thank you. All right. Last month, there were no public comments for responding to. Let's see, next thing up is some committee reports. I think we covered facilities pretty well already. Mary, are you presenting an update on the instructional technology committee?
Absolutely. So the instructional technology subcommittee held its first meeting ever on Tuesday, January 9th, and that members of the committee are Brian Pollak and Dave Barrett, and it is led by Stephen O'Toole and Trish Beck and Dr. Speaker Palabinski. The meeting really served as an opportunity for subcommittee members to gain a better understanding of the recent history of instructional technology here in the district, its current implementation, as well as the future hopes and plans for technology integration throughout the entire spectrum of teaching and learning. Past use of technology here was really considered more or less an event, as Dr. O'Toole said, and I tend to completely concur with that, it was something that you went to, you went to a computer lab, or you had a special program that was part of an instructional segment. It was not, there was not consistent integration. But then again, the technology and the programs really didn't exist at that point to do so. Technology at that point was an optional component of teaching and learning, primarily due to those shared resources and focus on instructional professional development. So currently, as we've heard with the one-on-one program and many other great things that are going on, instructional technology is forging ahead with lessons learned from the past practices, and it's really being more robustly integrated into the curriculum to provide equity and consistency in its application. The skills of communication, critical thinking, collaboration, creativity, and digital citizenship will be, will be highlights of the program, and really the focus will be on those topics, as well as integrating purposeful and meaningful uses of technology on a regular basis. And a lot of that has, is being fleshed out in the district's app committee, where educators and members of that committee can bring forth ideas for apps that they've come across, and they have to really be vetted to see whether or not they are meaningful, affordable, appropriate, et cetera. Standards for teachers, administrators, and students are part of the protocol, as defined by the International Society for Technology and Education, and professional development is now being focused on the student use of these applications. Looking forward, the committee will be meeting on, the full board meeting on January 22nd, two fifth-grade teachers will be presenting to the board about how they are integrating iPads in the classroom instruction as part of the one-on-one technology that we are implementing. Board members are encouraged to submit their questions in advance to Dr. O'Toole on this topic, so the information to address those questions can be included in the presentation. So if you have any thoughts, please forward those questions to Dr. O'Toole. Now that our annual subcommittee meeting has taken place, we're going to really be drilling down into each of those components for future technology integration. As this process begins, the subcommittee invites questions and thoughts from the board for consideration at any and all times. Do we have any thoughts or comments by either Brian or Dave, or at this point?
I think that sums it up pretty well, it was introductionary meeting.
It was a good meeting, it really was.
Since I missed it, I won't make any comments.
So our next meeting is Tuesday, February 13th at 6:00 PM here at the district office, and folks are invited to join in.
All right, thank you. Just, it's not really a committee report, but other comments. The board goals for the contract negotiations that were in the executive session, documents will be discussed next week and voted on for approval, so please make sure you review those, and those will be posted as part of the agenda. The draft agenda is also there.
Can I make a quick comment?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Before you move on.
Yep.
Just in reading some recent emails, Seals has right to no requests. I would like to see a little bit more proactivity and quicker response from the school district with regard to right to no request, and we know we're not going to be tending or turning anything over regardless of what the reason is. Making taxpayers wait till the end to get a response, and the response being no, I think kind of undercuts our position as a board on transparency regardless of who the request is coming from. And I would like to see a quicker response, and I would suggest that we do that within at least 24 hours, if we specifically know the answer is going to be, we have nothing to give, or if we know where it is and we can identify where that is, that specific locations on a website, our website are provided, and they're also turned around relatively quickly. And I just state this because, you know, we do adopt this concept of transparency on this board, but it bothers me as a taxpayer, as a board member, when constituents in the school district that are quite frankly paying some members' salaries sitting in this room can't get the information, they have a right to know, or at least get an answer that says no within a reasonable amount of time. So I hope that's taken under consideration by, you know, Chuck and Regina, so that we kind of be a little bit more proactive in responding to our taxpayers.
Any other board comments? All right, like I said, the draft agenda for next week is also there. At this point, I will open up. At this point, I will open up the podium for public comment. If you can comment, state your name and residency, and please limit your comments to three minutes or less, it would be appreciated. Thank you very much.
I knew you'd be talking about the budget tonight, so I wanted to present something to the school board, not to the superintendent and to the business manager, but this is directed to the school board. Great Valley property owners deserve a tax cut. Bruce, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm tired. Bruce Chambers, 17, James Thomas Road in Malvern, thank you. What I want to say is that Great Valley property owners deserve a tax cut from the school board. In the last six years, as you've mentioned tonight, as Phil mentioned, the spending has ballooned to over 25% increase in the last, in the last five or six years. And based on, based on, oh, thank you, thank you. Based on this year's budgets, I looked at all the budgets in the county, and we're spending $24,000 per student on this year's budget. But yet, we're behind the academic results of TE and Unionville, and other districts are gaining on us in that area. TE spends 20,000, Unionville 21, Westchester 20, and Downingtown spends 17. Those are tremendous differences. If you spent the same as TE, you could reduce our budget by $16 million, and we could get a 20% tax cut on our property taxes. We deserve a tax cut. Last year, the superintendent acknowledged that you're spending more than any, than other districts and said it would be addressed. However, I've seen no plan to reduce spending. To the contrary, as we saw tonight, you're spending more money, including adding personnel, teachers that weren't planned, and for administrators. The school board must constrain the district's spending. I appreciated Dave's and Phil's comments tonight, and I hope that those comments result in some directives from the Board to the administration to cut spending. We deserve a tax cut. Last April, I gave you my analysis of what I called the deceptive budget practices of the administration. I've updated that study with the 2017 results, and I will give you a copy of that tonight along with a copy of my comments. In order to justify tax increases over the last six years, the administration said you would have deficits totaling over 15 million dollars despite raising taxes 12%. But, there was no deficit. Instead, you had a surplus of almost eight and a half million dollars. That is a budget miscalculation of over $23 million in six years. There's concerns raised by the Board tonight about capital funds and the reserve funds. Your reserve funds have essentially not changed since 2011, they're the same level. That's because the administration underbudgets for tax revenue and overbudgets for spending. They try to scare you into increasing taxes. This past year, they underbudgeted the interim real estate tax and transfer tax by more than $2.6 million. The administration's budget presentations are no longer credible. Property owners deserve a tax cut. In the last five years, the assessed value of the taxable property in Great Valley has increased by approximately 12% from $3.3 billion to $3.7 billion. That's an automatic 12% tax increase in revenue for the district with just sitting there without raising taxes at all. That's more than a 2% increase in tax revenue per year without having to do anything. Shouldn't that have been enough? Property owners deserve a tax cut. The administration continues to try to scare you and the public into accepting a tax increase. When was the last time you heard them say they could cut taxes or they could reduce spending? I haven't heard it. They push for more taxes using these budget presentations every year, yet their budgets are always wrong. They have no more credibility. Will you believe them this year if they submit the same budget picture? I won't, and you shouldn't either. It's time for an honest budget process for 2018 and 2019, and it's time for a property tax cut. You can afford it. The property owners deserve a tax cut. Thank you.
I think that's right. I need one more. Sorry, Bill, go ahead.
Buildwire, 10 Stewart Drive, East Whiteland. I'll be very brief, I think we've listened to enough tonight. Obviously, there's a problem with the budget, there's several areas to look at. Number one, we've already talked about taking a hard look at the number of teachers that are employed. Number two, it's very obvious that the school board needs to get the teacher's contract in hand. Number three, we're going to need money for the foreseeable future. So, I'm going to recommend again that you sell the property across the street, and in my opinion, you should look, and I know it's not going to happen this year, but you're going to need money for several years. You need to sell Backton Hill too. That is not a feasible location for a school. You would spend a boatload of money just on doing the road improvements alone to get in there. And the last comment is really a question. We've talked about special ed and so on. I'd like to know where the problem is with the people that we hired outside. Are we hiring incompetent people? Why are we running into problems like that? Because I don't know if you're going to solve them by hiring another psychologist in-house. Are you going to reduce the monies? Yes, you are in the beginning, but you have to remember that when you hire somebody, you not only are paying their salary, you're also paying all of the additional benefits that they get. So, I think that needs to be taken a hard look at. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Allison Warner, I live at 15 Dillon Court in Exton. I came tonight because I don't know much about this, and I had, I was really angry to hear that the Thanksgiving break was being taken away. So, again, this is where I think you're going to laugh, because now I've just sat through and listened to, you know, these massive, huge problems, so this Thanksgiving thing is what we call a first-world problem. You know, it's tough for us, I don't have family here and it's the only week we get to go away. And we've counted on that for all, this will be our ninth year living here from moving from Connecticut. So, I just, I heard someone mention something about, you know, having a committee and just setting expectations for the year coming up, because I know families, I talked to families today and they had no idea either. So, and they've already booked vacations. So, that's just my input. Again, first-world problems, and I'm humbled actually, and I'm really glad that I sat through this entire meeting. I truly, I truly, no, no, that's not the joke, the joke was before. I truly am humbled and I am honored to be a taxpayer, and I'm privileged to have my children in this school district, so thank you all for your service.
Thank you. All right, seeing no other public comments, any other board comments? All right, thank you very much, everyone, have a good evening, and hopefully we won't get too much snow, Tyler.